Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody out to Planning Commission meeting this evening. First of all, we'd like to excuse some of our members that are normally here. First of all, Commissioner Mitchell, who is the chairman of this commission, is not with us tonight. We also don't have Commissioner Warnock or Commissioner Carroll here as well. But we can, we still act as a quorum, so we will continue tonight with all of our agenda. We'll start tonight with the pledge. Joseph, would you lead us in the pledge?
Happy to. Please rise, say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Good to me.
I move we approve the minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Our next item on the agenda is a preliminary plat and zone change on Canyon Court. And Dave, we will let you give us the heads up on this one.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Menon Hall. First of all, this is the site that we're talking about, so the northeast corner of Spanish Fork Parkway and 400 North. That is the subject property. And we have been working with the applicant for a number of months now, close to a year. You know that we've had a few conversations with you as the planning commission about different aspects of the proposal. We've talked about architecture, layout of the site, the need to modify our zoning text to be able to allow for what really would be a mixed-use project, a combination of residential and non-residential development on the subject property. So relative to the specific action that's on your agenda tonight, there are a few different pieces. There is a proposed preliminary plat. There really is, what I think constitutes a site plan as well, but that's not, not something for the planning commission to consider. I mentioned that just by way of the level of detail that the applicant's provided in terms of what they'd ultimately like to see built on the subject property. And those two actions, the proposed zone change and preliminary plat, which in each of those two cases, the planning commission would just be making a recommendation on those items. They're coupled with a proposed zoning text amendment, which we have also on the agenda tonight, but a little bit later with some other text amendments that we have. The nature of the text amendment is such that it would create a new zoning district. I think it's probably most appropriate, if that's the direction that the council ultimately wants to go in, that, that, what, for now, or at least just calling a mixed-use zone, that that would replace a zone that we have that's been on the books now for almost 25 years that hasn't been used.
Is the idea that this would be, if it passes, it would be passed in a manner that it would be an as-of-right approval under the mixed-use zone, or would still be an MPD in the mixed-use zone?
The latter. Master Plan Development in the mixed-use zone.
Okay.
And we'll also be talking about that a little bit later, but relative to some other text changes. Not with the idea that they, at least originally it would be tied to this, but ultimately could be. So I mentioned that just by way of, there are some moving parts. However, given the amount of conversation that we've had to date, and what I think really has been a good faith effort that the applicant's made to address different comments and concerns that have been raised in this forum, and as he's had a conversation with the city council as well, just by way of trying to get a sense for what people would ultimately have some inclination to support, which I have appreciated, I think perhaps as much as the applicant, where the particular development style, although it's very much so in vogue and becoming more common as a way to develop property all over the United States, it's really something that we haven't done yet in Spanish Fork. Again, by way of co-mingling some residential and commercial uses within one project. I will mention that we've seen a development pattern that's in some ways similar to what the applicant's proposing here with what's simply happened around the neighborhood Walmart. In that case, the residential and commercial aspects of an area, they're segregated in a way that they wouldn't be with what's proposed tonight, but I would say the relationships from a land use perspective are very similar. So, that being said, relative to the specific proposal tonight, if I can maybe just start with the zoning side of it. It's a little bit unique in a few different ways, and the table was set for that initially back in 2008. Again, just a different perspective of the subject property there altogether. I think actually we end up having a little bit more than 15 acres. Got an image here in a minute that'll help us clarify that. That's the site by way of history of what has led to the current zoning of the subject property. This is an image that I took out of a staff report that we put together to accompany a general plan amendment that was presented to and approved by the city council almost exactly 15 years ago, on April 15th of 2008. That happened as the city had been contemplating what became the Northeast Bench Annexation. That's an annexation that took about three years to get through the review process. It partly took as long as it did because a fairly large project was entitled with the annexation. The Legacy Farms Development was approved when that annexation was, was finally approved in 2010. Now, just describe a little bit more about what this means. Prior to a proposed general plan amendment that designated this property here as general commercial, and this property up here as kind of a medium-density residential designation, everything on the, I'd still say Northeast Bench over here, was simply designated low-density residential on the general plan. This change was made as the city was getting a better understanding of what a pretty significant roadway would look like here, really in an effort to try to make sure that the city was reserving property for non-residential uses in an area that even back in 2008 was really starting to develop at a very rapid pace. The Nebo School District had purchased the site for Maple Mountain High School just a few years before. I don't believe the school was open in 2008. If it wasn't, it opened very soon after that. But really with, with Nebo purchasing that site and delivering utilities out to be able to have an operating high school in the area, that's what kind of set the area on fire from a development perspective, and again led the city to start to think more about maybe some future needs for the area and that type of a thing. So this happened in 2008, and really hasn't been significantly changed since. This is, incidentally, the exhibit that is attached to the annexation agreement that was created for that Northeast Bench Annexation, approved in 2010. Just a little bit of perspective on what I'm talking about here with the follow-through on the general plan, if you will, where this property, when annexed, was zoned commercial to, property to the north was zoned for a little bit higher density as well, and what we see here relative to the lot layout, that was the Legacy Farms design at the time.
What was some of the motivation for C2 and R3 there? Might be helpful.
R3 was based on the idea that we started to know that this was going to be a really significant transportation corridor, kind of a belt route for the city, and just feeling like that would be an appropriate place for higher density between a corridor like that and the railroad tracks, particularly if that was flanking some kind of non-residential development to the south. We felt like, and even back in 2008, it got some indication from people in the commercial brokerage world that, hey, given what this road means as a state route for a couple of different communities, Mapleton and Spanish Fork, and what this potentially could do, having a lighted intersection here would be very attractive, they were saying back at this point in time to people that would do non-residential development, retailers of different types and that sort of a thing. We were becoming more aware even then that having those types of services and land use opportunities dispersed throughout the community, we believed was a good thing. So for example, what, what ended up happening with the neighborhood Walmart, like I mentioned earlier, they have plans for similar types of neighborhood-oriented developments, the south part of town, southwest part of town, and so forth. Trying to capture opportunities where the market might support non-residential development was the motivation. And that being said, it's set like this for, I could say, 15 years now, and there's kind of a delay I'm feeling on things. Are you advancing it, or is this working?
I, well, it doesn't look good.
Okay, thanks. Maybe that's the delay. This is the general plan as it stands today for the, the subject property, again, designated commercial on the general plan, but the zoning map is a little bit different. So the last thing that I mentioned is kind of by way of the history of the, of the subject properties. This area was zoned with the Northeast Bench Annexation, and that has not changed. Now, we got a little bit more insight into what is needed for this property to be able to accommodate a grocery store at some point in time between 2008 and 2019. And in short, there is not enough depth with what the city originally had zoned with the annexation to accommodate a grocer, kind of a medium box-sized grocer, 50, 60, 65,000 square feet, something like that, and what they typically would require for a parking field with what the city originally zoned commercial. So when we received a development plan for the project to the north, we were able to work with the applicant there, and they set aside additional space for the purpose of being able to expand the commercial area, to pick up additional depth, with the hope of being able to accommodate particularly a grocery use. And that being said, the zoning was not changed at that point in time for that property to the north, so it still remains in Zone Residential 3, and I think a part of the subject property that we'll talk about tonight, that was originally zoned C2, remains that way. But this is the subject property today with two different zoning districts. So from a zoning perspective, the proposal would involve having the zoning of the 14.3 un-acre site and the 2.64 acres to the north of it, all zoned, let's say, mixed groups with that concept in mind. Any questions about that? Okay. So moving forward, this is site plan slash concept that's been presented to the city. This has been vetted pretty thoroughly at staff level, as well as we've had a few conversations with the planning commission to get some informal feedback, talk about what I think the highlights are. This, this is representative of how the westernmost part of the site could develop if the applicant ultimately is able to give a grocer to land, so to speak, in the project, and do something with that part of the site. These structures here would be strip retail space, I'll use Canyon Creek as an example. I don't think they're in the marketplace today, really, or a lot of deviations, but likely multi-tenant buildings with access to drive-throughs, drive-throughs, food users primarily, but structures again that might look like the building that Wingnuts and Great Clips and Rumbies in and so forth, in the Canyon Creek project, just as an example. And maybe like a Solicious type of a thing here. So those will be the primary non-residential components of the project. This building here, at least that's proposed now, would actually be an integrated mixed-use building, non-residential first floor, residential units above, and that's the only structure where that particular kind of mixture is contemplated with what we're looking at here. The remaining part exclusively residential, north and east part of the site, east up against the railroad tracks there and the Mapleton city boundary on the other side of the tracks. Altogether, just over 100 units included in what we're seeing here tonight. Residential buildings proposed to be, I think Byron, we might have to advance ahead a little bit, I'll come back, because this is working out great. So this is not the particular design that the applicant originally proposed, and I appreciate changes that they've made without going into a lot of detail there. It's an upgrade, it's a definite enhancement, including going from four stories to three. I appreciate the way they've responded to different comments that we made relative to what we had felt would work on the site. A little different perspective of what the site could look like, and I'll speak more to could versus would here in a second. One of the things that I think is critical to making, any kind of project like this actually have something of neighborhood feel, is providing amenities for the residents of the neighborhood. I think this is a case where probably these amenities, to some degree, they bleed over and can serve patrons of the non-residential site also. Not something that would be uncommon, particularly in a more urban kind of setting where you see these sorts of combinations of land uses. But just a few different perspectives that the applicant has provided as a representative of what they intend to build. Nothing, again, that my opinion is out of the ordinary, just kind of in the contemporary world of what tends to get built. This imagery of that building that I said would have potentially the non-residential uses on the bottom, residential up above, and so forth. So a couple more, more points maybe for me to make. The biggest challenge in terms of really being able to understand what would happen versus what could happen is the finicky nature of retail development. We've come to understand that really, really well as the city, because we've worked with, I think, probably honestly, most retailers that are in the market in Utah County with the development of Canyon Creek. And we certainly had a lot of swings and misses there with people that we thought would, would do something there and left, or they maybe left and came back 15 years later, like Target did, and that sort of a thing, but there's no way, in my opinion, for anybody to guarantee that this happens. And that has been a consistent concern as we've conversed with Planning Commission, City Council, and is a concern for the city's administration and staff as well. I appreciate that, I believe the applicant's been very candid by way of expressing their eagerness to try to make that happen, but they don't build and operate grocery stores, as would typically be the case with the developer doing a project like this. So they, they're stuck with what deal they ultimately can strike with somebody to, again, come up with something to operate there from that perspective. That leads to, again, one of the more significant concerns, it's my opinion, this is one of the more significant concerns that's been expressed about what's proposed here, which is that, how do we know that this is what we ultimately get? We as staff don't like presenting things to you or the city council that we aren't certain are going to happen the way they're proposed. This is a case where we're coming straight up the gate and saying, nobody can guarantee that aspect of it. I feel differently about this, as I think the applicant does, just because of what we've seen happen in the market, the level of interest, for example, that was expressed with the little spaces that are available on the north side of the neighborhood Walmart, for example. A little different setting, a little different situation, but just in terms of what feel I do have for the pulse of the market for this kind of space, it seems like the demand is genuine and real.
Now, might be a good time for you to talk about the development agreement in the context of not being able to be certain of what's going there, because that would have been one of my questions for you anyway, is condition number five, which talks about timing in the development agreement. What is staff's idea around a development agreement?
Okay. So I guess that the way that I would anticipate this project to move forward, if it has the support of the planning commission and then the city council, would be that we have that conversation ultimately with the city council. Planning commission makes a recommendation, we go to the city council, and if they are inclined to support the approval of something that looks like this, or incidentally, something that looks like this, which is a little bit harder to decipher maybe, but with this, the eastern two-thirds of the design of the project have not changed. The western third or so has to contemplate how that area can develop non-residentially if at some point in the future it becomes clear that a grocery store will not be cited on the subject property.
And summary then, is it staff's idea with condition number five in the development agreement to have the city be certain of the outcome for the two-thirds portion of the project to the east, but not the third to the west? Is that correct?
Yes.
Because that's what a development agreement does, it makes us certain of the outcome. You agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, my caveat, and you'll understand it well, is that future city council has the authority to change a development agreement.
Of course.
The intent obviously would be to ensure that, that a model that has residential development not expanding gets followed. Maybe that's how I'd put it. We've had numerous conversations with the applicant about the fear that the city has that, hey, this is going to get built, and this is going to set vacant for some period of time, and the applicant's going to come back and then expect the city to approve apartments there, or something like that. By way of addressing that concern, it's our recommendation that the applicant rebound to a limit of the residential uses that are shown with this plan. And I appreciate this as a representation of some other way that the site could be developed aside from, you know, what I think honestly is everybody's goal, something that looks more like this. And, you know, one of the things that's particularly beneficial about typical development agreement formats that we put together, other communities are not different, they would not only bind this property owner, this applicant, but futures, future owners as well. I don't believe this applicant has an intention of selling this property today, this project today, because that happens all the time, right? So we're, we're needing to make sure that things get solidified, memorialized, and regulated such that it doesn't matter what the ownership of the property is, the end result is certain.
Is staff's recommendation to apply a mixed-use designation from here over, not just the residential portion, or with the mixed-use here, and then the rest is C2? It's the two-thirds is mixed-use though? Is that the recommendation?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Enlighten me, please.
So what you described maybe is another option, which would be to zone some part of the property exclusively for commercial.
Which it is.
C2, the majority of it, not all of it. And to have the remaining part of the property develop in a residential zone. That's not different than what we have with the condominiums that are next to the neighborhood, if you will. That's an option. In my opinion, a zoning option that lets us look at it as one project within one zone has some value to it. But if that's something that you, the commission, council feels is a better way to go, that also probably would require some, some text change.
But if we, if we were to consider that, then we may not have a hook in that if it's just C2, then any future city council, or even a developer, could come back and ask to have that changed again because it's not tied to the eastern part of this development. I think it would be better to keep it all mixed-use and incorporate the language that's required to try to get what is here in it.
So is that staff's intent, is the entirety of the project be zoned mixed-use?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to ask.
The draft language of the mixed-use zone was prepared in part with this model in mind, with the idea that the whole site would be zoned.
And the MPD mixed-use would, in theory, limit the amount of residential to what's there now, what we're seeing now?
I think frankly more that would be with the development agreement and the specific site approval. That's really where it would specify. There's a density.
That's what I was worried about, because I think the mixed-use has language in it that could expand the residential component.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things that you're aware of, and I'll reiterate it, is that creating a new zone, you know, and as much as that zone gets applied someplace else in the city, yeah, that's just simply an opportunity that goes beyond the property boundaries of what we're looking at here. And yet, the act of changing the zoning map to accommodate that, that's a legislative act, and the city council has a whole lot of discretion as to whether or not that happens and how it happens, and that sort of a thing. Maybe one last thing, I think.
And I cut you off, so keep going with your presentation. He may have answered all that stuff.
You're good. The timing was good for me, thank you. And this is actually something that Commissioner Menon Hall pointed out. I'm not sure if he meant to, but in terms of what can happen today on the subject property, we don't have design guidelines, for example, for development that happens in our commercial two zone. We have some pretty broad site design kind of criteria that developers have to follow, but that affords people a lot of latitude in terms of what they can and can't do. So today, by right, with an administrative approval that you wouldn't see, a site plan approval that would be administered by the Development Review Committee, this property can be developed with the list of uses that are provided in the, or permitted, I would say, instead of provided, in the C2 zone, and that could happen really without a lot of oversight. Incidentally, should that happen, I think this really ends up being a shame and a remnant that is the type of thing we don't want to have in the community. I don't think that should be a decision driver with what's being proposed tonight, but just by way of kind of the big picture of what some of the scenarios would be if this is not developed as one unified kind of a project. I think there's certainly the potential, at least, that something ends up happening there that is, is less than the highest and best opportunity.
What do you envision the development agreement saying about the one-third of the project on the west side that shows a grocery store that may or may not happen? What do you, what is the staff's recommendation on condition number five as it pertains to the grocery store portion?
This is the most important probably thing that the development agreement has. It's an exhibit that demonstrates what the real intent is of the, the development of the property.
So we intend, and the development agreement intends on referencing the site plan as the uses that have been approved for construction within the development agreement itself?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that, this is worth a whole lot of narrative.
And therefore, any different user other than a grocery store would have to come back to the city to get the development agreement amended for that particular use. So in essence, we're creating almost like a PD zone and various specific uses that are approved.
I like it.
Good thinking.
I like it.
Well, let me, let me bounce this off of you. This, this idea was born from a conversation that the applicant had with the city council by way of kind of premeditating maybe what it might look like if a grocery store can't be there, as if potentially there's like an A and a B in the development agreement. That the only changes, obviously that the way that things are illustrated graphically, they're different, but showing, you know, maybe it's professional office buildings with another strip retail building out in front, freestanding pad, you know, maybe the type of thing you'd see fast food user and the like, just a different way.
You're saying what's approved by right today?
Well, incidentally, all of those things are consistent with what's approved by right today, but I see some value in having the development agreement contemplate what might be acceptable to the city if, Byron, you don't know what direction I want to go, but I want to go back to the pretty picture. There we go. If this, if specifically, I would even say, if this doesn't happen.
Can you remind me, does the applicant control the entire, I want to call it 15 acres? Is that accurate?
Yes, and it's, it's closer to 17 acres.
Yes. Does it, will there be a time component? I'm a little bit nervous about having two options if in six weeks, option B is exercised and, which makes the grocery store or another larger box store go in there, is there, is there a time component of that that says if after so many months, years... so many months, years, whatever, you know, it can be changed?
To Plan B.
To Plan B.
I assume that would be case.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with saying Plan B can be exercised at any time, because that defeats the purpose of what we're, what we would like to see there.
Yeah.
I mean, part of the reason that this is being proposed is to provide services for people that live on that side of our community. And, you know, grocery store would be a great advantage to those people. If that's not going to be that, you know, they could put in, you know, professional offices or whatever else is deemed necessary in there. But I'm not necessarily against that, I'm just saying that I would like to see some kind of a time constraint put on that, so that that decision isn't made, you know, within just a few months. We know that, you know, in the economic times we have now, who knows how long it's going to take to have someone come in and do this, so.
Is Plan B concept ready to be presented, or not? The Plan B that you're referring to for the development agreement?
In as much as it's just a concept, I think so.
Okay. I think that would be important.
Yeah, it probably, honestly, we have not thoroughly vetted that yet, but you're right, probably does require.
Because we're pre-approving uses on that portion that are going to be approved by right in the development agreement, unless it's changed later, you know, later by the city council, which is pretty unlikely. So I think we should see Plan B.
Okay, I think that, yeah, that's worth, that's definitely worth additional time and effort. To Commissioner Minnichal's specific question, the idea of having a trigger of some sort that, you know, until X amount of time has passed, or by way of maybe just assigning a certain date, Plan A is the only option, we've discussed that. And I think it's understood that that's going to be a critical component of having the city feel comfortable that indeed, a genuine effort's made to make this happen, we haven't discussed a specific timeframe, might be good to discuss with the applicant, you know, what his thoughts are, and to get a recommendation from you on that, you know, if you move forward.
But also knowing that if it is going to be developed, it being developed as a whole, even if it's Plan B, because grocery store doesn't want to go there, is still better than in pieces by various developers, in my opinion.
Agreed.
That's certainly part of the motivation of having this conversation, I know.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
We're planning, man, obviously.
Oh, is that what the plan?
That's what that plan, Commissioner.
Now I really think it's the last thing for me, sorry.
Wait.
Like, there's a lot to cover here. Tell us more.
We're going to hold it to you.
We had a neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago, I really appreciate some input that we received that night. It was mixed, the input in terms of just taking the temperature of neighbors as to whether they like the concept or not. Actually, we spent a lot of time talking about concerns that people have, even with existing traffic on 400 North.
What was the notice radius for the neighborhood meeting?
500 feet.
Okay. In every direction from the boundary line of this entirety of this project?
From the outside boundary of the project in every direction. That's what the halo encompasses. And to try to summarize succinctly, concerns about traffic volumes here, and some dysfunction that neighbors feel like roads have today in terms of how people get to and from Maple Mountain High School, this road here, and we could look at a broader map and see that it's a pretty, you can get here pretty directly from Maple Mountain High School by way of using local residential streets versus I think what the real intent is, which have people on, collector material kinds of roads like Spanish Ford Parkway and 400 North, as a means of controlling traffic at this intersection. The proposal contemplates a roundabout. That's the proposal for a few different reasons, one just again, as a traffic control measure, also as a way to try to somewhat moderate travel speeds on a really straight, at least wider than a lot of streets in town, kind of a route like 400 North. But folks expressed a concern about whether or not that really would function at that location. Also, I have concerns about landscaping on the south side of 400 North, we've got our parks guys looking at that, lighting from the development, things that you would certainly expect neighbors to be concerned about. And I'd be the first to say that particularly on the traffic issue, there's no silver bullet that's going to make any of the existing concerns go away. I do think that there are things, and this is coming from a guy that's not the traffic guy for the city, right, so maybe it's easy for me to say, but I think some of the concerns that were expressed do definitely warrant some additional attention on the city's part, whether this property develops like what we're talking about today or not. But in a nutshell, those are these, some of the things that we gleaned from the neighborhood meeting, and mixed feelings about the concept.
Mostly traffic?
Mostly traffic, but some folks definitely concerned about the idea that the property developed commercially too, so just fundamental land use.
And did they mention what they prefer? Not that it's their land, but did they give an alternative, or that they're just against it?
Really, the nature of the conversation wasn't set up for that.
Okay.
Yep.
I've been curious.
Yeah.
Can I talk to you about the roads? Is it now a good time?
Yeah, and we've got our expert officer running the computer today, so I'd be happy deflecting traffic, thanks is all.
So that's one of my concerns too. I have it on good authority that to here, in the morning for Maple Mountain High School, gets backed up where people coming out of arrived homes development cannot turn left, they can only turn right, which means if we put a roundabout there, I have a lot of faith in citizens of Spanish Ford, but not when it comes to roundabouts.
Okay.
So what I'll say is this, if a roundabout, if them entering a roundabout would cause a roundabout to be backed up, which is nearly certain to be the case every morning when Maple Mountain High School is receiving students, I think that would be worse than a dedicated left-in to arrived homes and a dedicated left into the shopping center. Because at least the right turns are still available. The shopping center is there, we're eliminating all access.
You're talking signal?
Not necessarily signal. I could show you, dedicated, if you go back there.
Dedicated lane.
Just right here. So a dedicated left in and a dedicated left in. So in the worst-case scenario, we're blocking both dedicated lefts, but still allowing a right-in, right-out and a right-in, right-out, which is the worst-case scenario, which is likely to happen, in my opinion.
Yeah, we could study this area more than that than I know.
7:55 AM, just go sit there.
Yes.
Well, the question I have is, I think in previous conversations, didn't UDOT request this configuration?
I don't know if they requested, but they've approved it.
They approved it, they didn't request it.
I don't know the nature of how that came about, if they proposed this or...
They would be less vulnerable.
They actually worked well, pretty flowing, better than signals in a location like this, so.
And you've got another signal.
If there are multiple on 400 North, then there will probably be one or two more that come on 400 North, so. The ones we still, as we watch them and re-study them, they're working really well, especially that S R 51.
A signal actually might drop, would solve it, but it's just, but what I said would also make the damage less bad.
This, a roundabout would be useful.
It's actually a little too close to that road across the first.
No, and I didn't recommend it, that's what you're talking about.
Well, yeah, but a roundabout, I think is the best solution for this.
Even if it gets backed up at 7:55 AM every morning?
And every time a train comes? Yeah, even more than that, you know, you'll be backed up some, that happens on S R 51, if it backs up that far. It backs up all the way to Maverick.
He goes through Maverick and Mapleton.
Right.
That's a long trip.
It's a long way.
We need faster trains, as long as they're safe.
We could study a slant road.
Slant road can be safer.
They're actually using slant road, they're actually using slant road as a feeder from that in the mornings as well, if people know about slant roads.
Okay, I think we need to move on and hear from the applicant and staff, because we are scheduled for a public hearing where everybody can have their concerns aired. And so rather than have everything go two or three times, let's go forward. Dave, did you have anything more?
Just on traffic, one thought that I've had, the applicant has offered to have his traffic engineer participate in conversations, they're the ones that have taken the lead on working things out with UDOT, our staff's very involved.
Very good.
On that as well. With the right-of-way that the applicant has set aside on their design, it affords a lot of different options as to what could happen on 4th North Corridor and that type of a thing. Sometimes, this isn't the best forum, to have a really meaningful conversation about why things for a specific issue like traffic are recommended to be the way that they are. We'd be happy to have a separate meeting just to talk about Spanish Ford Parkway and 400 North traffic, if that's something the commission thinks is valuable, you could come or not, what we could get against some of the other folks that are maybe a little more dialed into the specifics here than I am, and have more of a discussion than we can have in a hearing, so.
Mr. Chairman, do you want us to ask staff questions now or after public hearing?
Let's let the applicant speak first, and then we'll have, then the commission can ask some questions to either staff or the applicant, and then we'll go into public hearings. How's that? Let us know who you are again.
Corey Anderson. I think this is the fifth time here, so what else do you want to talk about? Any questions, anything that you want me to...
What are your thoughts of some of the suggestions by Dave regarding development agreements and timing and having the Plan A and Plan B exhibit? Talk to me about staff's recommendation and your feelings about it.
My biggest concern, and I shared this with the council when we had that work session, was the control over this. Everything else I feel like I have complete control over, and I'm confident I can, we can develop that out, build buildings, do whatever. That's just something that we're not going to do, is spec a grocery store in hopes that there's somebody to come in and do that, and then so we're at the mercy of...
Do you own that third of the project?
So we currently own this piece down here, all the C2.
Okay.
I have the upper three and a half acres under contract, so we do not currently own that, but it is under contract. So everything else I'm confident with, we have, we're working with a buyer for this pad, I'm designing a building for this pad, we're working with somebody that's designing this, we're, we'd like to get going on building these out. Like, this part, I'm not worried about being constructed at all. It's that. So I'd like the council to have that idea of a Plan B, I like that idea, I've never thought about that. And that layout that we did was probably a 20-minute layout that our engineer did, so we did not give it a lot of thought either. So I'm happy to look at that. If there were kind of, you know, the utilities and such that are going through there are going to kind of limit what can be done, because our intent is to develop the whole site, including the roadway going through there, all the utilities going in and out to the parkway, so, you know, it's pretty much, there's only going to be a few things that we can do as far as a commercial, and I'm...
What's the square footage of the grocery store portion on the north side of the drive out, of acreage? It just gives you an idea.
Five, it shows on models, I think it's like five and a half acres.
It could be, it could be more detailed.
Yeah, there you go. 5.13, is that right? Over five acres.
On just the north portion?
On the north portion.
Okay.
I don't know of that.
5.39, I believe. It's about half, it's okay. That's what, I just wanted to know how usable it is.
Go back to Plan B.
It seems usable.
There you go. So that kind of gives you, so that's 2.39 acres, 2.5 acres down there.
Gotcha.
But it is accurate to say that without anything, just the zoning the way it would be, someone could come in and want to take all, any, or some of any of that that's left here, right? I mean, you've got this, you've got this divided out, but it wouldn't necessarily be that way if someone comes in and wants to do something, you know, different than that, or, you know, they take all or some.
The layout that we have with the grocery store there is a 60,000 square foot grocery store.
Right.
You know, say somebody comes in and wants to do kind of like a Days Market that's in Provo, 35, 30, 30,000 square foot building, maybe they wouldn't need these bottom ones and we could convert that over to more commercial lots. I'm not opposed to do any of that. And I think that, I stand from the staff and the planning commission and the council, the concern is the residential component of this, that it's not, that we're not going to come back in and say, it's not working, we need 200 more units.
That's right.
And I'm happy with the development agreement limiting the amount of units, the thing I would hope that the staff or the commission and you guys would allow us to get going on that and start the snowball thing on getting those.
So if this were proposed now, you would go ahead and close this contract so that you could, or are you going to, are you planning to phase these, maybe these first and then these?
To build these all out, it's probably going to be a three-year process.
Okay, that's...
The way we build these and how we market, these are individually owned condos, so there's no apartment complexes where we come in and slime all, so we'll do a building at a time. We're just wrapping up 100 units in Orem, wrapping up Winko, and that's taken us about three years to get through.
And you would have a manager of this development and HOA that each one of those owners would be responsible for?
Correct.
Okay. And that HOA would also maintain this area with the amenities?
Yes.
Is it all for rent? All of the units are for rent product?
These, no.
To buy.
All of them are for sale?
Yes, all of them are for sale. There is a, within, we get them FHA approved, so, you know, first time a buyer could come in here and buy these. There's some components to the FHA guidelines that you have to follow, which is 51% have to be owner-occupied. So there could be individual units that somebody down the street wants to buy and rent that out. So that is a possibility.
Kind of in line with John's question, if the development agreement is written a way where there is a timeframe for the grocery store, and then if it is not realized within that timeframe, there'd be a Plan B, and that were to occur, would that be enough of a reason for you to close on the R3 portion of the project to control all of the land?
Say that one more time.
Would you close on the R3 portion of the land if this is approved the way staff is recommending it?
I haven't heard what we're allowed to do here.
Gotcha.
If we're allowed to start building these, then yes. The concern in, and I hope this, we could have this conversation within the operating agreement, to limit the amount of units and that we don't have to have so much square footage of commercial done before we can start building our residential units, then I'm not opposed to doing that at all.
One more question that has to do with the residential units. Do you have different sizes of units? Do you have two, three-bedroom?
This layout right here, they're all two-bedroom, one bath. We've built about 500 of these throughout Utah County, St. George. Our primary market is to the newly married 23 to 30-year-olds that are just starting off in life, about 75% of those are that age and...
Square footage?
Square footage is about 900 square feet, and we have pretty strict rules and regs that prohibit more than two unrelated adults that live there, nor other two vehicles at a time. We've done this for 10 years now, we know what people try to do, and we've tried to limit and block some of the things that they try to do.
What, in your opinion, as the landowner here, what is an appropriate and fair timeframe for Plan A before Plan B is allowed, in your opinion?
You guys tell me, I mean, that's not...
We could do that.
That's not even in my mindset.
And I don't have a problem doing that, but I want to see if you have an opinion.
I, my mindset is, I don't think it's going to get to Plan B. So I'm confident that we're going to get something there. So whatever that is...
The timeframe.
I'm confident with me. You can do it a lot more than months, that's for sure.
And if these units are built, and some of these, would it be fair to say three years?
Yeah. I mean, so for instance...
Define what has to happen within three years. The grocer acquires the land, the grocer commits its construction, so we'd have to figure that out.
Yeah, that would be part of the agreement. And that's all I'm trying to do is to see what kind of timeframe... And that's all I'm trying to do is to, is to see what kind of timeframe you may be, may be acceptable to everyone. Yeah, it's an effect here.
Well, for a selfish reason, you know, I'm thinking of my, of building this building here to put retail components in there. I would love that.
For sure.
That is going to be, I want that grocery store there because that's going to just bring tennis to that.
You bet.
Again, I, I haven't thought about that because that hasn't been...
Is that a new idea to you tonight, the timeframe for Plan A? Is that what you have?
Yeah, like I said...
I don't know, you haven't heard. Cross parking easements, are you...
The whole thing.
The whole thing. For the residences, they're...
Yes.
That makes sense to me as well.
We have a, I've got a project down in Springville, 600 North, that is kind of similar to this. There's a commercial building out front.
Is that the part south of Walgreens? The one south of Walgreens?
Correct, yes. There's, I've got a building out front there where that furniture store is, and I've got apartments up top. We have a cross easement with parking there and it works great because, you know, when nine o'clock, when the employees come to work, go to work, the residents are leaving. And when the residents come back, the employees are leaving. It works great. And they have cross easement with the town, or the condos in the back, so parking is not an issue.
Are you showing a masonry wall over here in between the turn tracks?
Yes.
And then back? I think they already have one.
That's already in. We'll wrap this, come this down. I'm not sure how far it's...
What's the setback? That's the next thing I was going to show you. What buildings ask, what buildings have back do you have back here?
I think it's 20.
And then over here?
I believe that's 20.
And what's the height of each of the three-story, of three-story buildings?
I believe it's under 35 feet. They're flat, so it's probably going to be, I know our, our other buildings that are, that are three stories, they're 35 feet, but they have a pitch room. These are flat, so it's probably going to be closer to 30.
I think that's better. When it's closer to residences, residences to the north, it's less ominous.
Well, and if you look at, like, these, these townhomes that are back there are actually fairly high.
Correct.
They're very high buildings.
I was there, so I didn't check it out.
I don't think it's going to be that big of a, it's not going to stick out.
Okay. Any other questions? We can always come back to him after we have the public hearing.
Sounds good.
Sound good? Thank you. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to go into, or we don't need a motion to go into public hearing.
Yeah, you're just the boss.
We will just go into public hearing at this time. There are a few rules that we try to adhere to, and that is, is that we would like everyone that would like to, to speak. We do ask that if someone else has already made the point that you're going to make, let's not belabor the fact and have five people say the exact same thing. Also, we'll, we'll try to hold each individual to three minutes, to their comments. If you want to designate someone to represent a group of four or five of you, or even all of you, we would of course work with that time limit and not hold you to the three minutes. We would let you go further. So with that, we'll start with the public hearing and we invite you to come up to the microphone, pull it down so we can hear you, and give us your name and where you live in relationship to this, to this proposed, proposed zoning. Let me say one more thing before you start. We will take, we will take all the public comments and not have discussion with each individual. We'll write down your concerns and then we, as the commission, but more likely the staff, will answer those after everyone's had a chance to talk, okay? So, go ahead.
Michael Tutton. I live just south of the project. My backyard would be where the Red Bell is proposed. There's a tree on this property and I've named it, so...
Where have I heard that before?
Michael, not very persuasive.
I hope you didn't use the same name. There are, there are certain naming rights.
No, I would, I would say I would propose an option C and allow, because of the, because of the two and a half, I think it's two and a half acres, it's already zoned for multiple houses, that if that, I guess grocery store doesn't come to fruition, that they use that back portion of that property to continue three additional units along the back. I don't see that that would be, be a problem with additional, you know, for additional use of that section of the property, but just something that can...
So if I understand you right, you're saying that in addition to these, if that doesn't go, if this, if this doesn't go to allow three more units to go here?
And then you could repurpose that lower section for commercial.
Thank you.
But yeah, I don't have any problem with the, the actual mixed use with the residential. I think it's actually a good use of this property because I, I'm not a fan of the big, large grocery store because I think the one that's a mile and a half away is plenty for the area, but I guess if you don't ever want to drive south. I think another use of that property could be an urgent care or a doctor's clinic or some, you know, some kind of facility like that as well. My, my biggest concern is the setback in the 400, 400 North Corridor. If there's enough easement there for future, although I wouldn't want that road to become too wide, a future widening with turn lanes and instead of, you know, more like what you proposed, instead of a roundabout, more of a traffic flow based on the, the number of lanes in that area with the dedicated turn lane and that kind of thing. So just the, the offset there from the road, the buffer, as you will, between the, between the development and the actual road with plenty of space to plant trees and other barrier, you know, natural barriers to make a buffer between the residential, residential ride developments.
Thank you, Mike.
Ed Hill. I live 501 feet north of that area, 100 feet because I didn't get the notice. So some of my concerns must have been the traffic, but more of them also on the development of 400 beyond this plot, right? Because we have a lot east and a lot west that doesn't have a lot of development. We don't have sidewalks. And to turn on to Slant Road is a horrible thing if you're turning left on Slant Road going eastbound. So it backs up traffic that, one of our plans as a city to get that to be developed. So we have sidewalks and we have a turn lane left into Slant Road because that's going to also with the increase of traffic. And then once you open up the railroad, and I think it was estimated that we'd have approximately 10,000 cars, more cars on that, so that's going to put quite a bit of load on that. And I will be turning onto that from my house because I'm off of Slant Road right there on Old Fort. So those are just some of my concerns. Also, just a question of safety when it comes to small families of children playing in the parking lot with the residential. Has that been looked at? Because you'll have little kids running in the park area and potentially having accidents for, with children running around not seeing cars. It's another issue I have. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I own up to Slant Road, so I own the property just to the, to the west of this project. I got a letter in the mail for the, excuse me, for the, for the neighborhood meeting, but I didn't get it until the day after because I was out of town. But I want Corey to know I like the plan. I live close to it and go get milk real easy. The same thing I like is, I'd like to have this same concession on my property because I, I think it's a well use of the property. I've got a daughter that lives in Springville on, on the project that Corey has down there and it works really well for him. A lot of young kids there. They've got businesses in the bottom part of some of those structures. Parking's not a problem down there. I know on Fourth North, it's a nightmare, but as soon as they get the rest of the road for Parkway down across the tracks, it'll take care of a lot of that and help out a little bit, especially on Fourth North. But I like the, the mixed use. I, I'd love Corey to do something similar to the same thing on my place because I think it's...
And that's what you're saying?
Corey wants an offer.
Anyway, I, I think it needs a little bit on my place. Third acre lots is across the street from this, but I could have a hard time selling them. So I think, I, the same concessions that Corey has here is what I'm going to be looking at online to give a little bit of a buffer zone and create kind of a usable space there. But I like, I like the concept and I think it would serve those people in that area to have a little bit of commercial up there. I know when we Xanax'd in, they wanted the whole front of Fourth North to be commercial. And I think they're just getting close to a need on that.
Thanks, Monty.
My name's Kate Christensen. I live on 390 North. Fourth North is in my backyard. I'm up by, towards the tracks by that retention pond in the corner. Because of my own negligence, I did not know this project was going in and that the property was on commercial, so that is my own fault. But I would echo, I would like to have a landscaping change to where on the south, if we could have some kind of a landscaping screen, like trees fairly close together or like a concrete wall, six, seven feet high, to get us a little bit of screens to protect the homes on the south.
How tall is that wall now, do you know?
The wall that's there now is about six feet.
Should be six feet.
Six feet. But it would help if we had one on the other side of the road that would help it kind of screen that a little bit, just to, because my backyard, I'll be looking straight into this from my backyard. And then also the, the concern about the roundabout, I would echo the, the...
So this is your property?
Up towards. The one at the end.
Yep. Very good.
I would echo, yes, that's my home right there. And so I'm, I'm in the, towards the corner of the project. Just on the, the roundabout, I, I'd like the idea of a dedicated left lane with a barrier because I think the roundabout, again, with, as with the school, going in session from the high school, that is already a huge problem. You can't get out in the mornings like you were saying. And it, it's just a roundabout will not fix the problem. In fact, it might make it even worse with the commercial area there. So if you consider those options, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kate. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we will go out of public hearing. Did any of the staff take the notes on the questions or shall I go through mine? Brandon, do you want to, do you want to go ahead and take that shot?
Which one in particular?
Go through them from the first to the last. And we can fill in wherever.
I'll take the stab. Dave, feel free to... Excuse me. Some of the, I think the, a reoccurring thing that we've heard is that we definitely need some additional time taken to look at options for 400 North. And I think everybody's okay with that and I'm on board with that. So I don't think much further needs to be said on that. I think the city would be comfortable with whatever, whatever option functions and works the best and handles the traffic patterns that exist there. As far as the landscaping screen, that's not uncommon to have some areas that might have landscaping buffer. So the first one that comes to mind for me is, you think of the Riverwoods in Provo, you've got kind of an increased area that provides some of the buffering. I, I don't know that the applicant, I don't want to speak for him, but anytime we have retail, we don't necessarily want to hide it behind a screen wall. Usually what we want to see is, is windows, things that connect. You do the Scottsdale. We appreciate, keep the, keep the comments until another appropriate time. There are some cities that do different things. That's not something that we've utilized much here in Spanish Fork, usually for a retail establishment to succeed. It needs visibility, needs traffic, things of that nature. And so you could potentially increase, you know, tree count spacing, reduce it. You could do hedgerows, you could do an increased buffer. I don't know that it, that it necessarily accomplished what is being requested as far as putting a wall on the north side of the street. You could also, obviously do some improvements to the south side as well. Whether or not that's something that'd be entertained as far as increasing existing wall height or maybe coming in with additional trees, maybe evergreen, something that might provide a more permanent screen throughout the year.
Is, this isn't a landscape planned by any means, but it appears they have a number of trees through here.
Yeah, so the city would require as a minimum, trees every 30 feet on center. Those can be alternating between the park strip, between the curb and the sidewalk, or they can be on the street frontage landscaping, which would be behind the sidewalk. But those are no more than 30 feet in, in separation. And then we do have some additional tree counts that would apply as far as the parking lot and other, other places. So that's something that definitely can be looked at. I, I don't know that there's any solution or comment that I'd make on, on Mr. Bingham's voice of support. You're familiar with the proposal that came on his property. I, I don't recall, was it 6,000 square foot lots?
They're all single family detached.
Yeah. And so obviously there were some concerns voiced with the planning commission. We haven't seen a redraw as far as what he potentially might develop on his property, but that's always, always something that might come into play. Not too far in the distant past, we did have a, a landowner to the south that was potentially looking to do a commercial corner. I don't, I don't recall if Commissioner Ernest was on the council for, or commissioned for that one.
I've seen the different site plans for that property.
And so as the, this is just my speculation, but as the intersection gets improved and uses are established, sometimes there's synergy that starts happening and more and more people want to be in that location. And so that's something the, the council and the commission will have to consider as far as not impacting this, but in future discussions. And so if somebody comes in and wants to request a change to their zoning of their property, that's their right to do so, but obviously the commission can weigh in on that and make a recommendation specific to that project. There, there's always concerns as far as safety. Some of those can be handled with management, but others may require some physical barriers or redesign. And I'm speaking specifically to the comment as far as if you have kids that are frequenting the playground or enjoying the playground, you know, heaven forbid there's an instance where someone's not attended to or watched and, or even allowed to, you know, maybe walk across the street and get a drink or something. And so we'd always want to make sure that we've got safe pedestrian routes, whether or not there needs to be, you know, a low, a low fence or something that is an additional visual, visual barrier, saying, hey, you're now entering a roadway, you're now entering a parking lot. You know, that's something that the applicant can consider with, with the input that's been shared tonight. I'm just looking at my notes. I think the last thing that I've got written down was the first comment about options. And I think based on the comments tonight and the comments that were made by the city council, I think multiple options... council, I think multiple options are definitely on the table. Whether or not we can dictate specifically what those uses might be, that's a different matter. And so if somebody wants to come in and do a permitted use, such as a medical office, that is something that could be entertained with option B. Option C, we'd probably have to, as Director Anderson said at the beginning, if we start to make some tweaks or redesigns, we may want to make changes to the text as well. But that's only in line with the comfort level of the commission and the city council. And so for instance, if there's no desire to see additional units added to the project or the property, then it wouldn't make sense to contemplate that any further.
Right.
I believe I may have covered everything. Is there anything, anybody else broke down?
Any questions from the other commissioners?
For staff? How are you, how do you guys feel about the 20-foot building setback on the north side? Is this consistent? Just because I drove by the townhomes just earlier today, just to see how close they are to the boundary line, and they're really close.
Aaron, if you don't mind just pulling up the interactive map. So with the master plan development, you can have potential variations in the setback.
Right.
And so a lot of the time, it depends on the design and the layout. If you can throw a measurement real fast, I'm looking specifically, right?
Just the ones that are closest.
Right here.
Over here, yeah, those are the closest ones.
I would not want it to get any closer than 20, because I'd hate to create...
No, I don't want it closer. I'm contemplating...
...unused dead space between the railroad tracks and the apartments.
And I'm contemplating further, is what I'm contemplating. So like 20 feet?
26.
For some reason, it seems like they have some sort of patio backyard fenced in that goes beyond what your measurement is.
They do. So these were elevated, which adds to the height. If you go behind these units in particular, it slopes down to the wall. Each of these units do have their own private courtyard, which has kind of a half-concrete wall with a wrought iron fence on top.
Just from eyeballing it earlier, they appear to be about 10 feet from that fence, the back portion of their patio?
Uh, it's a little bigger.
A little further?
Yeah. So you can see these units have the patios in place. Right here. You'll just have to, yeah, just do the best you can right here. I know what you're referring to, though.
I just want to make sure that the two uses live harmoniously together and the property rights of both parties are being protected in a way that they both want to live there, is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, sure.
And 40, 40 feet frankly may be, may be adequate, especially with that six-foot masonry wall in between. I'm just taking a look at it. And actually, it's only most applicable to the two, potentially the two apartment buildings. One starts about here and actually, it's one and a half that it's even close.
And then the corner, this is the dog park.
And by the train tracks, it's okay, 20 feet's fine, of course. Okay, thank you.
Good observation. Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll return the time to the applicant, or if you'd like to deliberate as a commissioner.
More questions to the applicant, or any comments from the applicant? Seeing none, one of the things that has occurred to me, and we've discussed it a bit, is that with only three commissioners here tonight, and this being a significant change, especially with a new zone, mixed use, I would, I would like to see us table this, table a motion on this until our next meeting, which is only three weeks away, and have a full discussion then. We've heard from the public and we've got a good, a good temperature on how the public feels. And I, I'm not concerned at all with, with how we may vote or anything. It's more, I would like to see more participation by the commission, by having at least two more commissioners here, if not all six of us. So having said that, I would like to know you commissioners.
We talked earlier and I agree, I think this is just a big, big deal to just do it with three of us. So I would feel better about waiting till they're here. I feel bad because I know the applicant's been here longer than I have, so.
You guys are just missing.
It would also give you a little bit more of a chance to think about options B and C, if that's the way that you want to go, or explore that option and give us a little bit more of an idea there. Also, it would give us some time to possibly explore the other traffic options on, on Fourth North, on 400 North.
Probably the most compelling reason for me to want to do that is because I want to see Plan B. I don't want to propose approval of a development agreement when I don't know what the options are.
I think that that's...
That's for me the biggest reason.
And we will only recommend whatever change there is, or whatever decision we would like to see to the city council. And of course, it's the city council that will, will ultimately make that decision. And Dave, if I'm not mistaken, there will be another public hearing that will go along with the city council's decision, right?
Yes, with the zone change and the text amendment, those both require a public hearing with the city council.
Right.
So I don't mean to speak out of turn at all, but a question that I have, just about what you're comfortable with, if you continue this tonight to your next meeting, that's the 3rd of May, I believe, three weeks from tonight, would you feel comfortable with us advertising for a public hearing with the city council for their meeting after that? Which we generally send notices for that before that meeting.
Especially if you think you can get the exhibits to the development agreement ironed out for our next meeting.
Okay.
The applicant is...
That's worth talking about.
Are you okay with that?
Okay.
I know that times of the essence and everything, but I'd rather get it right than, you know, have something.
I understand what you're saying. We want to hash out more into a development arena with this next meeting.
Yes.
Not even necessarily the verbiage, but the Plan B.
Okay.
And, and he's saying that he would, he would, he would pre-schedule for the city council meeting immediately after the next planning commission meeting, which I'm also okay with.
I'm okay with that. So we wouldn't put it off long.
And on Plan B, we have a Plan B, it just isn't maybe prepared graphically into the level of detail of what we might call Plan A. So providing more detail and maybe just a, a better illustration of what that could be.
And what the specific uses...
Okay.
That will be included in the Plan B that we're okay with. Because the moment there's not a grocery store...
Right.
We need to know what those are, so that we can approve them.
Okay, okay.
And, and the three-year, I think there was, we kind of fleshed out the three-year. Is it, kind of maybe talk among staff of, is it three years from the time a grocer acquires or waives contingencies on a ground lease? Or is it, you know, three years from...
There's wires that people assume that that's locked, right?
Exactly. So, or also, if they waive contingencies on a ground lease, it's locked as well.
Right, so no grocer has acquired it within three years, then it's...
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
And we're open to staff suggestions on that as well.
More than three years is what we've talked about amongst ourselves, but we really haven't had a detailed conversation with the applicant about that.
And I'm open to...
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to continue this, the Canyon Court urban discussion.
Will it be another public hearing next time?
No, it won't be for us.
Not for us.
It will be for the commission, or for the council.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will continue that. Okay, our next is, our next item is B, Win Song subdivision.
Anytime you feel like you guys need a break, I know we started earlier than usual, so just give us a cue and...
Okay, they'd be happy to...
How's the air conditioning in here, is it?
Dave hasn't touched it, so it must be good. All right. I don't want to move quickly through this one. Many parts of it are pretty standard, but I do want to give it fair enough time that we can talk through any concerns or questions that you have. This is a proposal just to the east of Annie's Acres. So if we go to the next slide, please. I don't know if this is working or...
Yeah, that's...
All right. So you can see Annie's Acres, excuse me, just to the west, South Lane to the south. Give me one second. So what the applicant is proposing is to subdivide the property, and they're looking at rezoning the property to R18. And then as part of the project, they do have a few lots that would be below 8,000 square feet in size, but the overall average is 8,400 square feet. So to accomplish that variation in lot sizes that they want to provide, they would need to have this approved as a master plan development. So this layout that you see here would utilize the R18 zone and would accomplish 19 lots. What you have in the recommendation includes conditions that were specifically added by the Development Review Committee. And so if you have any questions on those, we'd be more than happy to dive into them. What's been a struggle for the applicant is not only extending utilities from, from the west, but then also having looping of utilities and roads to Main Street. And then also, the applicant has been working to coordinate with this property owner to the east, who also has an application that's pending. It's not quite ready for the planning commission review. Otherwise, it would have been nice to have both applications on the same night. But they have coordinated as far as the location of the central road, so it can be utilized in both of their plan, design, and layout. As is customary, we see improvements that would be completed, both on the exterior of the subdivision and then the interior public streets. At this point, the applicant does not have a building design product, and so they would just have to comply with the standards that we have for the master plan development as far as materials, roof pitches, things of that nature. Any questions at this point?
So this road is the road that separates Annie's Acres from this?
Yes.
Subdivision, and this comes out and over to, over to River Bottoms Road, right?
Yeah.
This property that you say has already had someone that's interested in it, does it, does it go right to the mill race here?
It does. Their, their design comes all the way in and has some improvements that would be along the ditch and the road, as well as a redesign of this intersection here. And so as far as coordination, this applicant has looked at some of the studies that are being done as far as mill race. Elevations will need to be shifted and raised as drawn by their engineer to address any concerns with that. But largely, just mainly coordinating that common road between them.
Am I correct in some language talking about this fence?
Yes, so you're referring to condition number four? Yeah. And so there was some sensitivity in the past as far as the property to the north, and so the DRC felt it would be appropriate to have a sizable fence, or excuse me, in this case, a wall, masonry wall constructed on the northern property line.
And it said six or eight feet? Is there, I think it said that.
Six to eight, yeah.
Six to eight? Is there preference on that, or?
Uh, no. They wanted to leave it open-ended, so if you have a specific height in mind, or the council does, it's within their prerogative to make that decision. But otherwise, the applicant would have the right to do a six or eight foot panel.
John, you're a water guy. What do you think?
The water that is associated with this particular property is a bit of an issue because there are some springs that feed here. There's a ditch that goes along here and contributes to that. This is one of the southeast field's main ditches. This is the mill race. There are no ditches on this property that waters that. But this ditch, you can see it right there, you can see how much junk there is here and whatnot.
Yeah.
This road is really a nightmare right now, it's so narrow. And where that ditch goes underneath right there, it's so narrow that large trucks drop right into the ditch. And so it's a good idea to get that all cleaned up and have something done there.
Yeah.
This, that's a, that's a really bad issue.
Yeah.
So, and, and then of course, the mill race will have to be addressed by those that are on the east side of this.
Correct.
Now this shows this street dead-ending here, but there is a house that is here, is within the city boundaries now, but I doubt that they're going to want to come in there anytime soon. So what is the purpose of this street? Is it just to have these first three lots?
Correct. And so what the applicant has proposed is there'd be a temporary turnaround here, so lots four and five would be unusable, there's a note to that effect, until that street either gets connected or a cul-de-sac. An earlier applicant, I'm told, had reached out to all of the surrounding property owners. I can't speak specifically to that, but my understanding is that this would, this would be the fix for the meantime.
Okay, all right. Now, so the, all of the utilities that are associated with this are available from Annie's Acres, they just need to connect to them, is that correct?
Yes, but then they were also being held up, if you can think of where river-run townhomes are on the west side of Annie's Acres. And so the area had a maximum number of units that could be served with existing utilities and road network. And so there's been a design that's been approved that would extend Volunteer Drive from Main Street almost all the way to River Bottoms Road, it would stop short of it. But that would also bring utilities and add additional looping and services for those utilities.
Right, any questions about this particular?
Thank you.
Now this involves a change in zone as well, it's RR now?
Yes, it's currently RR, and so we would need to hold a public hearing for it.
Okay. So we need a public hearing on this. The same, the same regulations and rules apply in this case. Anyone is welcome to come up and make their wishes known, or comments. I hold them to three minutes, and we'd love to hear from anyone that's here to speak to this. What's that?
Developer's meeting.
Oh, yeah, is the developer here. Let's have the, come on up. I'm sorry. Let's hear from the developer. You've probably got something to say here.
Well, hi. I'm Jamie Sanders. This is my business partner back there, Melissa Nelson. We're the hopeful developers for the Win Song subdivision, and I'd love to answer any questions that you have. We've been working on this for a very long time. Hi, Dave.
I do believe too, that there is a spring-fed ditch that goes nearly on your property line, but it may be a little bit to the north. Are you aware of that? I don't know that...
No, no.
It's probably further north.
It follows that fence line. I live right there.
So it does follow that, it'll have to be addressed as well. Everything is wet through here.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess that you've addressed those wet spots that you're going to have to draw up?
Yes, bring in engineered fill is the plan to raise, especially that northeast corner that is especially wet, because the mill race canal needs some improvements that we aren't able to do, as it's not on this property. So we have to raise this property up just a little bit in order to prevent, handle any flood hazard that there might be.
Do you know the width of this road right here?
I know that it, the requirement there that we have is half plus 13 feet, but I don't know the total width. Do you know?
So we're, I want to just make clear that we're not cooperating, I guess, and tried many, almost for two years to cooperate with the guys to the east. So that road that's between there...
Would you, would you come up to the microphone? The millions and millions on TV won't be able to hear you, watching on TV.
So...
Restate that for...
So yeah, so that road right here between us and the east, Brandon had said, Brandon, right? Okay, he had said that we're working together with the folks to the east. We're not, we've tried. And that's why we're doing the 50% plus 13. And then when they decide to develop their property, if ever, then they will need to
And then when they decide to develop their property, if ever, then they will need to come in and do the 50% plus 13.
Yeah.
So that's what we're working on there. And then we've done the mill race flood study, and, and that's what Jamie was just talking about with bringing in the engineer Phil, because we've done the very expensive study on that. And then we're not responsible for doing anything on a berm or a.
The improvements to.
Yeah. That will be the folks to the east, because that's on their property. And, and as far as utilities, we're also talking about utilities and where we're bringing those from. We're bringing those mostly from the property. The property has utilities either on them or at the street.
Yeah.
And so we're not pulling anything from Annie's Acres or from way down the road. We, there's power right there on the property, there's sewer at the street, and so we have everything that we need on property. Is that?
Anything else you'd like us to know?
We've worked so hard. Just give us the woo-hoo.
A woo-hoo? That's all it takes?
How about that?
Man, that's about as simple as.
I move that we woo-hoo.
I know there's only three of you, but if we can all just say woo-hoo together, that'll be great.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes, you bet.
Now we'll open it up to public comment for anyone that would like to speak about this proposed zone change in Platte.
My name's Jeff Vincent, and I live on River Bottoms Road. I'm just trying to figure out what we're going to do with traffic, because what we've done down South Lane right now has created a mess. What are we going to do down here at Volunteer Drive to get across Main Street, on Main Street? And then who patrols South Lane? Is that a city street, or is that still county? Who lays dibs on that? And what are we doing at the intersection? Does anybody know? I'd like to know what's going on in that area, because I live just east, right on River Bottoms Road of that project and that piece that they were talking about. So we would just like to know what traffic plans are and stuff like that.
So do you live east and north of this property?
Just right up there.
Right, kind of in there. We'll get you right down to your house.
Perfect.
Nice, huh? I think it's.
The white look, right here.
There. Very good. Thanks, Jeff. And Jeff, are, are you in the city boundaries now?
No. Run of my property, city. Back to my property, city. I'm county.
Yep. You stayed in the county, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
No, just traffic concerns is my biggest deal right now.
Can I ask you a question?
Perfect.
Well, I'll wait. We'll come back to it. Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else? Seeing none, I would entertain any comments or questions from the commission, to staff or to anyone else in the discussion.
By chance, we want someone to cover Jeff's traffic concerns first, or?
I think that that's, yeah. Jeff, the question, and maybe come back up so that I can hear what you have to say, because it's a legitimate concern, and I'm very, I'm very aware of, of the road and the canal and all of that. It, is your concern, it seems to me like the majority of traffic that's coming either east or west comes down River Bottoms Road and turns down.
Down South Lane. There's a lot of it.
Yes, most of it. Part of that reason is that.
Stop sign changed from a suggestion to a stop sign.
I understand.
Speed limits, it was 25, now they bumped it to 35. Why did we do that? We're adding more homes, but we've increased the speed, and we haven't made the roads any bigger.
As a matter of fact, this road is very narrow, and the canal makes it even more narrow.
Oh, yeah, I just about got blasted Sunday morning coming out of my driveway, somebody coming down around that corner. My mother did get hit right there once.
There, there is, there is a very, a very common saying, and it's true, that the way to improvements, especially when it comes to streets and utilities, is through development. In other words, someone has to pay for every inch of asphalt, every stop sign, everything that happens. And so in this particular case, they're landlocked with their proposal. They don't have much to do with River Bottoms Road, but they do have the frontage on South Field.
But they do impact more traffic on that road.
They will, well, yes. Everything, all of the development that goes on there, and the majority of the traffic that I see is not from these homes.
No.
It's from everybody up above.
Since they put all the stoplights on Canyon Road, everybody says, oh, we can go down here, and we can take the autobahn through the River Bottoms and jump back up on the bench.
And Jeff can watch us go by. No, I, I understand that.
Well, I've talked to the county sheriffs a lot, and they do, they get to where they race up and down there, and they say there's not enough traffic for us to patrol it. So then I've asked, who takes care of South Lane? Is that county or is that city? The county sheriff says, that's city's now. So whose is it?
That's, do we know that that is, I believe it's a city road now?
Yeah. I'm not 100% sure. But I think we take care of all of it.
Is it, is it city road past Annie's Acres? It may not be.
You can look at the city boundary. We can turn that on real quick, we should buy a zoning layer.
Right.
You can see what the city.
What the city's right up to the corner, then they go over to Garcia's, and then they outline Garcia's.
The best thing for us to do, to answer Mr. Vincent's question, would be to talk to our public safety people and say, hey, do you guys patrol this? If there's an accident there, do you respond? And we can call them next day or two.
So who plows River Bottoms Road there? Is that the city or is that the county?
I don't know, but I'll ask about that as well.
I'm pretty sure that's county.
County.
I'd be surprised.
Well, I've seen both of them go down through there, so I was wondering who implemented, who did what.
Well.
Mailboxes took off. This is the first year since 1962, mailboxes were took off by plows.
It's, it's, there's no doubt. It's a, it's a narrow road, and it's a dangerous road in some, you know, I, I had experiences there where we shut the water out of the mill race, fish cars out of the mill, mill race many times. So, you know, I, I'm familiar with that and whatnot, and eventually, you know, there's going to have to be some decisions on, on what we do with the River Bottoms in general, and what the alignment of the road is going to be, and the alignment of the, of the mill race.
Mill race.
Because in many places, the mill race can't go anywhere but either west or south, because you've got hillside right next to it. So that will have to be addressed in the future, and it, and what will drive it? Development.
Development.
And who, you know, that's a whole different kettle of fish that we're not going to discuss tonight.
Kettle of fish?
Kettle of fish.
They come in kettles now?
If you put them in there.
Okay.
So.
I like that. I'm going to use it.
Put it down in your notes. Hey, but Jeff, it's a very legitimate concern, and I appreciate you voicing that concern, and it ought to be part of what we talk about here.
I come to all the meetings for the River Bottoms. I'd like to know what's going to go on.
Very good. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It's a good concern.
Did we close the public hearing?
What's that?
Did we close the public hearing?
Oh, we, yes, we are out of pub, public hearing now, and we, is there any other discussion for staff or between us commissioners?
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
Dave or Brandon, can you confirm that the plat conforms with the MPD minimum square foot average overall of the lots?
Yeah. So the applicant's engineer put it on the plat, and then we just verify it. It's just under 8,400 square feet is the average lot size.
That was my only question. You guys, do you have questions?
Very good. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I think that we can go ahead with a motion.
Do it. I move the Planning Commission recommends approval of the Wind Song subdivision preliminary plat and zone change, subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Why are you laughing?
We're going to have one of you make the motion in one second.
There you go. All right.
His motion's a little better than mine, though.
I don't know. See, we've got to give you some practice over there.
I will ask the commi, the other two commissioners, do we need to take a break at all, or shall we plow through the next couple? That was the Wind Song development. We've got some preliminary plats that we need to go through, and we can go straight to those, or we can take a break. What's your?
I'm good.
You good?
I'm good. Someone could check that air conditioning thing.
Usually Dave's on that.
We're going to go forward. Our next item, our next item to be discussed is 5A Meadow Creek Ridge Amendment.
Thank you.
Remanded.
So this is a different part of town. This is the north side of town, along the Springville South Boundary. As you can see, if we jump to the next, oh, I've got it right here. You can see there's previous phases of the development that have been built out. The original approvals for this project have since expired, and so the applicant, applicant, excuse me, is coming back through, through for reapproval.
Was it originally approved like this?
Very similar. One thing of note is this is a standard subdivision, so the zoning, darn it, it's not working again. Next slide, please. The zoning is already in place. The property is already zoned R16, and all of the lots, as laid out by the applicant, comply with our minimum square footage, width, depth, things of that nature. A few thing, few key things, excuse me, to point out as far as the review of the project with staff, and then ultimately the, the Development Review Committee, is one, we've got a future stub here that's being provided, as well as there's a small portion that's being left out at this time. So what we have happening here is there's some designated wetlands right here. And what the applicant's proposing to do is they have approval to mitigate and remove this portion that's in red. That would be where the future road right-of-way is going to, to lie. This area for now will remain. There potentially could be the option in the future where if approval is granted from the core, then the applicant could come back and plat a few additional lots, but in the meantime, that will remain unplanted at this time.
And are they going, and how are they mitigating this? Are they going to purchase some ground that qualifies as wetland, or are they just waiting until?
We've had quite a bit of correspondence with the core. I don't, uh.
Yes.
No. Yeah, in fact, here, if I remember right, was it a nominal amount that they?
Yeah.
Who's working with the core? The applicant, I assume.
The applicant, yes.
Yeah, okay. The city should, yeah.
No, we, what we get is we get copies of the correspondence, so we can confirm that, you know, it's taking place and what the decisions are. So kind of a short summary, and you can come up and give more details.
Some small pieces.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll have the applicant come up in a minute and maybe ask, or you can give us any information like, and we can ask them.
So just to wrap up, proposal is 39 lots as part of a standard subdivision.
Let's make sure. The, a copy I have says 41, but your updated report says 39. Now you're good.
Probably because of these two.
That's the one I printed on Friday, apparently. It's all good. You got it right in the, today.
Was that amended?
Yeah, it's right, 39. I just pulled up the one.
Any discussion before we hear from the applicant?
Confirm, confirm it is subdivision application that's approved by right in the zone, not an MPD?
Yes, standard subdivision.
And Planning Commission is the land use authority, and it's a, it's a.
No zoning change.
No recommendations.
So the recommendation is written incorrectly. It would be for.
Public hearing?
Approval. No public hearing is required.
Thank you, sir.
And are we, are we recommending approval?
No recommendation. It would be the approving body.
Well, you get to decide if you're going to reckon, what you're going to vote on, approval or denial.
No recommendation to the city council, sorry.
Right. Okay. Let's hear from the applicant.
Good evening. What can I help you with on this? Answer for you.
Anything you'd like us to know?
The wetland problem will probably go away. That land west of the wetland is, the city owns that, and there's a ditch on that side, on the city's side of the fence, and it keeps leaking on my side. And we've talked to Chris about it two or three times, and I cleaned it out about eight years ago. It was so thick with Russian olive trees and weeds, and it really needs to be cleaned again, but Chris says there's not money in the budget. This is like eight months ago to put a concrete ditch in or pipe it or something, but it keeps leaking over. It's still leaking. That was a couple days ago, I saw it.
Do you know whose ditch it is? Did it service this area prior, or does it go to someone else now?
It goes all the way to the lake. I think it dumps into Dry Creek, like, over by the county jail, the county sheriff.
So, okay.
So it's been there for years and years. I assume it's your ditch. It's on your land.
But necessarily, you know? There's, if there's a ditch, there's an owner, and there's a right-of-way or a prescribed easement.
Right.
And so somebody owns the ditch.
Yeah.
And it, if it, if it's not conveying water to be used, then it's a drain. And either way, it has, it's there for a purpose, and that's why I'm asking, what is the purpose?
I think it's.
Is there water in it all the time?
In the summer, even when it's really dry, there's still just a little trickle. It must, you know, there's springs up on these, up by the roller tracks there off that cliff edge, and I, they must pop up, and still, even with a really dry year, there's still a little bit of leaks down there.
Our springs along railroad, yes.
I think it's mostly just drainage, and it dumps into Utah Lake.
If there's a problem with drainage, then that should be, that should be brought up civilly. In other words, if your land is being damaged by the negligence of another party, you can go ahead and go after them to either have it mitigated, removed, or somehow agreed to of what you're going to do. But the city probably wouldn't be involved in that unless it's on the city's property, and then you're going to have to deal with the city as being the owner.
Well, it is on the city's property. That's your, that's the city's land.
Okay. But the next thing to find out, it may not be the city's ditch or drain.
Right.
It may be somebody else's. And if it's running water year-round, there's probably a water right that's associated with that, and there might be someone, including the city, that's already filed on that water, and I can't answer that.
Okay.
If I had a minute on a computer, I could probably find it, but, so that's, but that really doesn't have anything to do with what you're proposing tonight.
Yeah, we can wait on that.
Well, that's something you'll have to resolve.
I have a different question. Sir, landfill, are you on the old landfill, or are you clear?
No. No, we're clear.
That's, that's good.
It's on your land.
It's a mess.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not on our land. We checked all that. We've done the environmental studies on the whole project, and we did test pits. We did, we, we helped build the sewer line through there and the electrical line before the road was built, and I, I, we, I think I got a pretty good idea where the garbage was buried, where the dump stopped, so.
You'll know when you start to dig. You'll know when you start to dig.
Our, ours has been clear too, so far, but we had some under contract that were in the landfill.
Excuse me, I need your name.
Lynn Renlosbacher.
That was the only question I had.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I don't think so.
If not, uh, any discussion with, uh, the staff or between us commissioners? If there is none, I would entertain a motion.
Sounds pretty straightforward, right?
Um, I'll make that motion, um, for the Meadow Creek Ridge. And I'm not sure how to word that proposal.
Used way?
I move we approve.
I move we approve the proposal, primary plat recommendation, um, for the Meadow Creek Ridge Phase nine and ten.
Subject to staff's findings and conditions.
Subject to staff's finding and conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Thank you. Next is Eagle Haven Subdivision amended. Brandon, we're working you hard tonight.
I think Dave's gonna take it. I'm actually passing through to the son.
All right. I was gonna say, it's about Dave's turn.
Okay. Uh, no zone change with this one. The zoning's been in place since the property was annexed. It's zoned R one fifteen. Um, what we're seeing here is both what currently is part of Eagle Haven and what's proposed to, I would maybe say, kind of be amended into the project, which is a site that's just north of the existing Eagle Haven Development. Um, just a handful of lots built adjacent to an existing street right here. So, uh, the existing Eagle Haven Development encompasses everything that we see right here. Incidentally, uh, we're about a half a mile north of U S Highway six down here on Spanish Fork Parkway. Uh, Maple Mountain High School's right over there. Um, again, subject property zoned R one fifteen along with, uh, at least most of what's in the area here. Um, uh, the original Eagle Haven Development was done by a different applicant and developer. And as we started working with the, the applicant on, on the prospective addition to Eagle Haven, it just seemed to make the most sense that it be developed in concert with, with what's to the south and having it kind of be wrapped into the existing master plan development. Uh, for the project to the south afforded the applicant here some options that they wouldn't have otherwise had. So, that being said, uh, staff has recommended simply that the project be approved, um, based on the condition of the staff report and subject to the findings that are in the staff report.
Very good. No zone change? Just the straightforward plat plan?
Exactly. Yeah, the only thing that's not standard is master plan development. So this would be one where you'd be making a recommendation to the city council for approval.
Right. And it is compliant as an M P D within the Title fifteen amendment to the maximum density. So that would have to be approved for this to ultimately be approved by city council.
So, uh, your recommendation, uh, if you're inclined to make a recommendation to, to approve it, it would be contingent on exactly that language passing. We'll discuss that just a little bit later tonight as well.
I did my reading. Ready for you.
I get it.
I'm ready, Dave. I'm ready.
Expect it, sure.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Discussion?
I ask my question.
It's not a public hearing, is it?
No. No public?
Applicant.
So, I would entertain a motion.
Do we want to hear from the applicant?
The applicant is here? Let's have you come forward. Who knows, after you told us what your plan is, maybe we'll have a question.
Jerry Kirill. And we've been working on this one for a little while. So, uh, obviously I think we met all the requirements at this point, all setback requirements, the stub street requirements that is to be built. And I have no other questions of the city. I've been working with Dave and Brendan both on the, and the other departments in the city to make sure all of that kind of falls and we have all our plans drawn and, and approved or at this point.
Are you the developer that will be developing the lots and selling the lots?
At this point, yes.
Any questions?
I got nothing.
Thank you.
You got some free dirt somewhere?
Everybody's like, and I suppose you want, uh, nice green stuff too.
Oh, yeah. You gotta hash, you gotta hash. Thank you.
Any further discussion with staff?
Same question on this plat as the last one, the R one fifteen. It, it meets the, the minimum average lot size, okay.
Yes. So, and, and so this is, uh, as stated, yes. So, seeing no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
My turn.
Your turn.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the Eagle Haven amended preliminary plat as proposed, subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Okay. We now have item C, Hamilton Commerce Center, Spanish Fork Phase one.
Appreciate the applicant coming back. They were here this morning with the D R C. Um, they're anxious to move forward, and so we've got them here tonight for, um, your review. Let me just turn to it. Um, I wanna just state before I forget, um, the staff report as written, the D R C did recommend adding an additional condition, and I'll go over that in just a second. And so that would be for your consideration as far as making a motion. Um, this is a standard industrial subdivision. Um, so the, um, recommendation, uh, listed is, is incorrect. You would be making, um, taking action on it tonight. Sorry. So this is in an area that is, uh, currently underserved as far as roads, utilities. And so if you recall, uh, sorry, Commissioner Clayson, uh, a few of you might recall, the Oberg Annexation, or excuse me, I think the Utah West Annexation came first. So the Oberg, both of them were located in this general area. Um, this area in general. Um, and because of the infrastructure needs and things of that nature, both of the annexations had agreements in place that kind of dictated what improvements and infrastructure would be needed to service this area, um, and allow development potential. And so what the applicant's proposing tonight, this is the property that they, that they own, um, this is a conceptual layout that would conform with, um, those annexation agreements. Um, you can see some backbone, uh, improvements that would be going in. What the applicant's looking at tonight is just Phase one, which is this southern portion here. We've got, uh, north this side, um, here. And so this is a, a rendering that would show how the property would be, uh, potentially divided with a final plat. Um, that would come after the preliminary approval. Um, the applicant is coordinating with other property owners in the area to do those improvements. Um, we've got a different, uh, developer that is doing some improvements just to the west, um, of this project. And so what we're looking at tonight is preliminary plat approval for a three lot, um, industrial subdivision. This would be the Hamilton Commerce Center preliminary plat request. Any questions for staff at this time?
I have one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this piece of ground is adjacent to a house.
Mm-hmm.
Actually two, I guess, that have expressed concern about having an egress other than just the railroad tracks.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, has that been addressed with this subdivision?
With this layout, yes. And so you'd have a public street that would be improved here. And then in the future phase, um, the agreement also calls out for an additional access which, um, has been drawn here.
So, will this allow for those people? As I look at this, go back to the very first, uh, drawing. And, uh, let's just take a look at where, where this, where, where these roads line up. Or how they, we had, we had several.
I'll go back one more.
Discussions with the property owner there.
Yep. So you'd see.
All right.
Come through right about.
So they're gonna come through there rather than along the tracks like they had talked about before? Well, I did talk about several options. So they're looking at going straight across there from the second?
I don't recall an option coming along here.
Okay.
The talks that I've been involved in, um, and when I visited the site, um, the discussion was here.
Very good. So that will go over to nine hundred, uh, that's three, or nine hundred west?
Yeah, that's the city.
Which is now city street.
Yeah.
Yeah, with this annexation. And they're working with the property owners that are on the west side of that street, is that right?
Correct. Um, they have a proposal that would extend eleven fifty west down.
Right.
And then reroute this to connect into that. And so, um, jointly, they're looking at all the improvements for the area.
Okay. And they, uh, so they're planning on going ahead with this? Is the applicant here?
Uh, yes.
Very good.
Oh, will you tell us the D R C condition that was added this morning?
Yes.
Sorry, I knew I was gonna forget. Um, so we have two standard conditions that they follow the zoning requirements and construction standards. The second, um, that they address any red lines, comments provided by staff. And then the third one that was added by the D R C is that the applicant conforms to the applicable provisions and requirements of the Oberg and Utah West Annexation Agreements. And so in there is things spelled out like the access to the Applin Apps and the area utilities and infrastructure and whatnot.
If they're happy, it makes everybody happy.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to leave this up, up here for anybody that wants to make a motion if they feel inclined to include this language.
It's, it'll be Michael's turn.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can still say, uh, with staff stuff. Like to hear from the applicant states your name and.
Tim Stevens from Hamilton Partners.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to tell us about this development?
No, other than we're hoping to deliver some much-needed, um, small bay industrial to the market here. We're excited. We've been working with Dave and Mike and the whole team for a while, um, and the Gardner Group, all the other developers in the area. There's a lot, lot of potential in the area, and we're excited. We're hoping to get started on the southern end as soon as we can and, um, as more infrastructure comes in, move north.
And you own all of this property now?
Correct.
And you're ready to go on that? There is a ditch that goes through. I'm always talking about ditches. But, but that one's kind of an ugly one. I had to clean it once and it's like a, it's, it's really wide and, and shallow.
Yeah.
Because they've let cattle just drink out of, during the summer and stuff, there's water in here most of the, most of the time. Have you talked to the Westfield Canal Company about that ditch?
We have, we have not yet that I'm aware of contemplated what we're going to do up there, uh, because there's a lot of, few different options, one including continuing nine hundred north through the ditch area, a bunch of things going on. So I don't know that there's been a distinctive conversation. Right now, we're focusing on the southern half of the parcel. We're trying to get that sorted and then move to the north.
It just would occur to me that this portion, uh, that ditch is all along here. And it's quite deep along that fence line. This has been piped, but this up here, you know, I would, I would not want to have you have your po, property, you know, harmed by a poor ditch that goes through here now. Uh, the majority of this, when they have problems, goes to the west and this ends up being a swampy area because of that. But it is because that's such a poor ditch. And so it'd probably be a good idea for you guys to talk to Westfield, find out what their plans are with that ditch. Especially considering the, that ditch will not go away. It, it, it services, uh, part of the community all the way down to Utah Lake.
Yeah, this is Nico, our civil engineer, so he may have some more information on that.
Yeah, so the, the developers to the west, Gardner, um, they're handling the nine hundred west infrastructure design, including the, the ditch that you're commenting on. We've spoken to the canal company for the, uh, concrete ditches that run east west on the site, and they said we're okay to demo those.
Right.
Um, but then, yeah, uh, the, the neighboring property will handle that, uh, those ditches in their design.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else that you, you're planning on moving forward with this development as quickly as possible, I guess, or?
As, as quickly as the infrastructure and the economy allows, yes. But the sou, the southern part, we are.
Economy? Okay.
Yeah. If we can lower interest rates, that'd be great. Call Fed Chair, that'd be fantastic.
He can do that.
Yeah, I got, I got a direct line to the president. It just doesn't connect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Any other issues? This has been on our radar for quite some time, and so.
It's straightforward.
I'm glad that staff has been able to work with you guys and get the details worked out.
And it's not an M P D, it's a subdivision application that's approved by right in the zone.
That's right.
Straightforward.
Straightforward. So I would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
Oh, boy. I will make a motion that we, uh, approve the request for the Hamilton Commerce Center pending the D R C's findings and conditions.
Including?
Including the staff findings.
Sounds good.
He wanted that too. Uh, second, it's close enough, second.
Close enough. All in favor?
Specific condition of Brandon, right?
Yeah, and not just D R C, staff and D R C's conditions, including the, the one that Brandon mentioned.
Yes.
Yes. We know, we know. That's perfect. That's, Michael got it, Michael got it.
Fill it in.
Got it.
All right. Uh, we've got a, uh, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Good luck. We're down to number six, which is the Annexation Policy Amendment. Before we start that and, uh, Title fifteen, would you like to take a short break?
Yes, sir.
Touchdown. We went into overtime. It's touchdown.
I was told we have purchased trees to replace the ones that die.
They're just nursing that coke for fear that I would.
Liver or moving plant.
That's funny.
Yes.
Did you, did you get the, you got the reference of the tree, right?
Oh, uh, yes.
Steve's tree.
Steve's.
Yes. Were you there that night, Michael?
I was.
Oh, man, that was, we were out of the twilight zone. Um, anyway, it didn't get maintained for a long period of time because it was never turned it over to the city. And frankly, it never still has gone through that process. We just realized there was a problem. So I don't see that as a kind of excuse. And then last year.
The area, the area has updated.
Uh, right. I mean.
She has got four.
Other pay attention, like the overwatering or weeds.
The loss is natural.
Yeah, totally, they still. Towards the end of the year, they voted. Yeah, at least, but it was still like, it was, it was, it was a gamble. They were allowing grass. So, just a question, so that apartment, the back of my house, they do this thing, whatever, you know, maybe they find Smith's Road to build a grocery store down in August. They're never going to sell that property that's in this. It's a whole class. The, the power company owns that.
Honestly.
They'll never do anything with that walkway that goes dead end to dead end. They'll put another walkway on the other side of the road.
Um, you say walkway, which, are you talking about like the power board or light at all?
No, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's an asphalt sidewalk that goes all the way down that road. And then it doesn't go in there. And now they're gonna put a sidewalk on the other side of this building or, if they develop this, it's a good idea. My only concern is that awful. And I don't see any, you know, all the edges for a shot on if that was, I mean, like, that was, which, whenever I said, well, Scottsdale. Cause, cause I'm thinking, you know, this part's residential, this part's residential. So to buffer both of us with a, you know, a buffer there doesn't diminish the visibility of this property by just making this a little bit more.
Yeah, and in my opinion, it's things like, or maybe more substantial testing.
Yeah, distance, the, the meandering sidewalk instead of the straight one, you know, cause see how it's just got the asphalt? I don't know if they're gonna do an asphalt sidewalk on the other side.
That will be a concrete sidewalk on the side, it's gonna be an asphalt trail on the side.
So is that part of it? That's, so ours is part of a trail system that just needs to be connected.
So you're talking about.
Yep.
Yes, thank you so much.
Let's make sure Director Anderson knows about your request for the new building.
There's trail system.
Eric, this should have, Eric, this should have worked.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a trail that comes up here and goes to that triangle part.
Which is the green.
Yeah.
But this is also, wait, are we gonna be the new building?
Yeah.
Uh, next meeting.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
So. If you haven't been over, please.
Just having.
Taking a tour.
Haven't over.
Uh, there's an open house on.
He kept talking about ditches.
Monday. I think, uh, yeah, Monday the twenty-fourth, six to seven thirty.
Yeah.
Where?
I made it.
Would you like a couple of ice?
We ran down fire.
I never knew where the cup pipe was for.
All right, what about mine? Or do you have a good couple of ice?
I'm good.
Who all do we have ice? But it didn't tie into that, so they would have to do the same thing.
Cause it's hot in here, seventy-six degrees.
I know, hey, but it was beautiful. It was really beautiful. I went to physical therapy and then went walking on the trail today. And it was warm on the trail.
I'm saying it's seventy-six degrees in this room.
I know, and I'm wondering why I put on, because my wife would have chewed me out if she was alive, that if I have to. If I ever came in short sleeve shirt, it was okay, unless I had to conduct. And she says, I need to put on, and she, and she wanted me to put on a tie and I says.
I'm impressed you tucked in your shirt.
So I changed my, I actually had a golf shirt and I was just gonna come in a golf shirt until I knew that I was gonna have to conduct it and so.
Well, I respect that.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay. Sometimes, you know, I guess, I guess we need to respect it, but for the most part, we're pretty, we're pretty informal.
Do a commercial property.
As far as, yeah, I agree.
And, and to tell you the truth, I kinda like that. Thank you, I think that I've had a lot of comments. The comment that I hear them.
Is there appreciative of, that's why I said just.
Oh, that's good.
We have gone over, you know, we've really gone overboard, not overboard. We've just gone beyond what we have to do. But that started to get a little bit out of whack at the beginning of this. We started that way and I thought, no, we don't, we're not gonna do that. Now, now all the.
Have you sworn off carbonation or something?
No. I'm old. They were sending me pictures from.
Hey. Oh, my hell.
That's a lot of water for out there.
You're not a kid.
That's the deepest noise I've seen out there in thirty years.
I went through Eureka a week and a half ago and stopped at that new restaurant on, on the west side of town, as you're going out of town. Have you stopped there? It's called Iron, The Iron Skillet or something like that.
Haven't that one because they're never open.
They aren't open until one o'clock.
Okay.
She works, it's a guy and his wife, and she's a lunch lady at the high school.
Oh, really?
And she doesn't get out off work till one o'clock, so they don't open till nine. And they close at like seven. But they had a fantastic, let's see, I have a hamburger that, oh, no. I had ribeye. Ribeye au jus.
Oh, really?
And it was on their homemade sourdough bread. And I had potato salad that came out in a little, like a jelly jar, you know, really good.
Was it?
But it's spiny. Well, we went, so we pulled in and nobody was there. This expedition pulled in next to it.
I don't either, but.
And so, guy I was with rolled down the window, I was driving, he says, somebody here, somebody.
The option C is not even, neither is Mr. Bean.
Come on in. So we were the first ones there. By the time we got done.
Well, I, I think you're taking away that strip of.
Just got the cinnamon roll.
Really commercial or a residential that could have been.
Well, then we had to share.
Yeah, you did.
Kind of the same, you're, and you're just taking it and you're kinda purposing it over here.
My wife likes to go out and check trash sometimes, just so that she can eat a hamburger.
Which, which to me is just counterintuitive. You'd think you'd wanna put the grocery store next to the railroad tracks and the residence over a little further away. Oh, I know.
Well, I got married to some guy.
Right. That's where you get your visibility, right? So, so that makes sense. But if you can't put a big box store in there, which I would rather not be a big box store.
He comes home from.
Then going and putting in another.
He comes home and there's something nailed to the gate.
We had this, we had this conversation last time.
Notice with a sheriff's sale, it's like on a Tuesday. When that happens, when they pay for it, it's theirs. You gotta be out.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And so along with that was a, was an order to move out. So we had to load up the traders and go out and move them. They were out there when they had the, the grasshoppers out there.
Don't talk about a car.
I have never seen.
I know, I know a grocery store.
Just driving, just hearing.
Somewhat makes sense to service, to drive to Walmart is really not that big of a deal.
I told you a few years ago that the old church was for sale.
Cause of all that.
They wanted too much, but I told them to travel. Move out there, cause there's a little house here, house here.
Yes.
And I do an Airbnb, she's like, absolutely not. So I thought, if I can get the little kids on board, so I took a little camera. Looking around. There you go. They live across the sea, the gas station. That has more treats than we can. So we went home and they're telling Andy, we're moving, we're moving. Without me, you can't.
Oh, man.
That's why I don't live on the other.
But I'll tell you, I got a lot of California guys. Did a few days Airbnb. All the time. Movie, movie people from Alberta. If they're doing certain movies, they have to furnish actors, somebody. So they run out there all the time and they stay for night and go back and work and.
Interesting, interesting. It's, it's a unique place.
It is, for sure.
But.
So, but, and we went through there, there was like four feet of snow on both sides of the highway. And I've never seen that much snow there.
I haven't, I haven't either.
I agree, let's get out of here. Oh, and I gotta, I got one thing, I gotta, I gotta correct here, not correct, just include.
And they do the early turkey paddock and every.
Now, they're not there.
There's just, where I, where they're usually at, you can't even.
Now, after this week.
But urgent care is, that's. I don't know. Further to drive to the hospital than just to drive to the grocery store.
Well, let's go ahead and get started again.
Appleton people.
I move, we approve the proposal involving amending the current annexation policy boundary or, or recommend approval to the city council.
Do I have a second?
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, let's hear him out, let's hear him out. Quick, quick cleanup.
Prior to that, there's a cleanup item here that D Westridge Business Park, we will continue that to our next meeting.
Thank you, that's staff's request, so.
Yes, so that will be continued and now we're to the annexation policy and too bad that didn't carry.
I know, I, it should.
Due to the lack of a second, it dies.
We should follow some sort of decorum, I mean, some. May I complicate the next item just a little bit?
Well, of course you will.
Consider, did you vote, by the way, on continuing the other one? Sorry.
Yeah, oh, all in favor of continuing that, say aye.
I move, I move, we continue, wait, I shouldn't. You just second it. I shouldn't.
He probably shouldn't.
I, I don't wanna, yeah.
Okay.
There's only two of them, can they?
We need a motion for, from you to continue.
I move that we continue the Westridge Business Park proposal.
And I will second it due to.
I recuse myself.
Yeah.
We got a recusal.
And so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
There we go. Now we can go back.
Was that official or a key?
Yes, so please, yeah, thank you.
So we'll go to item number six.
Commissioner Ernest recused himself and did not vote on that item.
And Dave's got some special stuff that'll keep us here for a while. But we're gonna hold you responsible.
You can count on me, for sure, I'll deliver. Hopefully this doesn't take too long, but I'm gonna complicate things just a little bit.
Okay.
But before I do that, we had a conversation about the city's annexation policy plan either, I think it's been a couple of meetings now. I recall. And I, I didn't expect to get what we got from the commission. I think we actually got some outstanding direction and here's what I distilled it down to. That as we evaluate areas that potentially should be added to the city's, I'd call it like anticipated boundary for growth. Our annexation policy plan, as we expand the line outward that encompasses the properties that the city legally can entertain or act on at least an annexation application for. We consider these items as we evaluate what does and does not make sense. The desire of property owners, the city's ability to provide services to those areas. And I might kinda add another part to that, or the city's anticipated future ability to provide services to that area. Land use plans by way of, as a particular applicant's plans for the use of the property sync with what the city would expect to have happen on those properties. And then development timing, is that area within the foreseeable path of development on a reasonable timeframe? Those are things that we heard from the commission that we could use, not necessarily as the bible, but at least as a guide. When we annex them in, we have to service the roads, right? I mean, we are, or not. Upon annexation. That's what I'm thinking. Now, to be clear though, here we're not talking about annexation. We're talking about. And I'm with you. Working on the blueprint for annexations. Then I'm with you. So that's the. Yes, I agree. The other side of it. So that being said, to try to make this a little bit less complicated than I.
But, but this is the area that we are, that necessitates this, this policy change.
This is the first area that we're bringing to you and there might be some others, particularly in light of the idea that we're going to be working to some extent on the city general plan.
Yes.
And as part of that project, we'll be contemplating areas that, you know, maybe we should be doing some future land use planning for. Now, this area and this particular proposal is really driven by an application that we have to develop three hundred and twenty acres right there. That was the impetus for this conversation. That proposal has been vetted by our neighboring community, Springville. And to try to succinctly put a fine point on that, after they studied the ability of Springville City, that is, as Springville City working with the applicant on the annexation here, to evaluate whether or not Springville could, on a timeframe that Springville's comfortable with, provide services to this property. Ultimately, Springville decided that, hey, rather than to keep this property, maybe I need to say it a little bit differently. Springville decided ultimately to allow the applicant to petition for annexation into Spanish Fork with an explanation to us that they've shared that they're not going to protest that annexation. And I believe it simply because we have services, utilities available at the doorstop of the property today, ready to go. And it likely would cost millions of dollars and take years for Springville to be able to do the same thing.
And that slough is part of that issue for Springville. They'd have to get over around, under, through somehow to get there. So I think it's just, I don't think that they could afford it.
I'm not familiar with the details, but another just nuance to this particular situation is that the applicant for the annexation here is the same group that's been developing properties on the south side of the highway. So they have spent millions of dollars installing utilities that can serve a significant part of this property, if not all of the developable acreage on it. So to develop a redundant system in an adjacent community, because simply that community was dead set on annexing that and having it develop in their city. There's, there's certainly something illogical about that from my perspective, so. I was in favor of it last time, I'm still in favor of it.
Me too. Did I, did I understand the city council last week that this property is also being annexed?
Well, they, they took an initial step to be able to consider that. So they adopted a resolution.
Yes.
For forty acres there and sometime in May, that will be back on their agenda for.
Will that come to us prior or only to them?
You know, it's, it's a little different process than what we've done typically in the past with this being an annexation by resolution versus by petition. With it, by petition, we've always brought them to the planning commission for recommendation on the annexation and zoning. I think in all likelihood on the third, we will have that on your agenda, at least for a conversation about zoning. And that, there might be something interesting about that conversation even.
Okay.
So, just back to this proposal, it's being driven by the majority property owner in what we see here. Or at least a group that has it under contract to purchase. And as we looked at whether it made sense to amend our policy to include that, we made contact with some of the surrounding property owners. In addition to those properties there, properties to the west that are owned by the Hales family are included in what we see here with the highlighted area. They've expressed an interest to be included in the policy plan and likely in an annexation as well.
What about the, what about the money property here?
Yeah, that's the interesting part for tonight, so that's where I muddy the water a little bit. We reached out to Mr. Money.
Right.
And he said, yes, I would like to be included in the annexation policy plan.
But he has no interest in selling the property.
I would, and I don't know about that, I just know that he's been clear about wanting to be included.
That's what I understood.
An annexation, have his property part into Spanish Fork.
Yes.
Now, that being said, talking about what Springville has studied. Springville studied and their council made a conscientious, as I understand, a deliberate decision to not protest any annexations of this property here and properties to the west. But in their mind and in their understanding, as they've explained it to us, this property was not part of that. So they have expressed via their mayor and city council and city manager concerns about this property here being included in our annexation policy plan and an annexation. That's why you see the image.
Okay.
Illustrating things the way it does here. And that being said, our city manager is working with Springville's city manager feeling as if, particularly because the property owner here has been clear about wanting to be annexed into Spanish Fork to see if it doesn't make sense to just go ahead and have that happen now. So my request of you is to do one of two things, either continue this, which you certainly could and we're no worse off if you do that, really not. To continue this, or I would ask that you make a recommendation with some consideration being given to this property here as well. Perhaps along the lines of something like if, if Spanish Fork and Springville can come to some type of understanding on the money property, that it also be included with this annexation policy plan amendment now as well. Stats report on this, Dave, says it's a, that we're actually approving this, not recommending it. So we, we officially. Want us to approve it or recommend?
You want us to approve it or recommend it?
No, I would read that differently, and I phrase this typically differently than some others. I think we're recommending that it be approved. I think you should recommend that it be approved as well.
Okay, it's to going to city council then?
But it is, yeah, this is a legislative act that the city council would have to approve.
Yeah, okay. That makes more sense why you're saying what you're saying.
Just recommend that be approved.
Yeah. It gives the city council the right to vote on it later, pending you figuring out that.
So you could do that, or if you wanted, if you, this is not time sensitive, I guess is what I'm saying. So if you wanted just to iron things out with Springville on this part of it, and then bring it back to you, we could do that. But that's the only thing in my mind that is in question at all with this. From an efficiency perspective, I'd love for you guys to act on it tonight and make a recommendation that gives us some flexibility to add this when we take it to the city council, but.
I would prefer that because considering that, uh, there may be, uh, more annexation to the west. It's likely that, that it makes sense to stop where we are now on the west, but on the east, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like it's very productive for Springville or Spanish Fork to not complete that boundary. If Mr. Money is, and, and he is, he, he would like to be annexed, although he has no intention of doing anything with that farm. That's, that's a large share of his farm that he wants to continue to farm. So he's not, he claims that he's not interested in selling it at all, but he would like to be annexed. So, you know, in a proposal that we make to the city, I would like to include that, as you have stated, that we give consideration to the property to the east.
Okay, I, I think that's a good way to phrase it.
How do you guys feel about it?
Yeah.
I, I agree. What Joseph said is, is I was for it before when we saw it, and I, nothing's changed.
Still for it.
And I like throwing him in there. If he wants to be in there, get it done now.
I, you know, I don't want to come back and.
I don't think this one's a public hearing unless you're saying it is. I'm asking.
Whether we listen to it that way on the agenda or not, we've noticed it for a public hearing, so.
Let's do it.
All right, then, uh, if we need to have a public hearing, we will go into public hearing. Any, any comments from the public? Public, public.
She has no comment.
Okay. Seeing no comment from the public, uh, is there any more discussion with, uh, staff or amongst the commission? I think it's pretty straightforward. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, wait, it's your turn on this one.
I move, planning commission recommends approval of the annexation policy plan amendment with the caveat that we are also recommending approval of the annexation of the property to the east if, uh, Springville and Spanish Fork work out something amicable for us to do that. So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Last thing, well, we have, uh, an A and a B.
And I'm gonna ask you to skip C tonight, so. Just A and B.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Oh, there is a C. You snuck that in on me.
I think maybe we hold that and, uh, if you'd continue C for tonight.
Okay.
Um.
Then first let's do that, then with title, with, uh, C, I'll entertain a motion to continue, uh, C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Now wait.
Too late, it's continued.
No, 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 we can't end.
That is awkward, Dave. Really awkward.
Our attorneys will.
Recall.
Recall.
Can we do that?
I think we can recall.
Um.
Or is it one of the others?
It's A. We need to continue A.
Anna, Anna, help us out here.
Oh, oh, wait.
Counsel.
Hi.
We just need attorneys. We need more attorneys in this world.
Just had another attorney. I, I have a question for you about that, Dave, because we spent some time on the mixed use zone. So are you telling us that we need to do a little more work on the mixed zone?
I can make a motion to put this one back in.
Amendment?
I've got it.
So we want to, we want to, uh, continue it?
Uh, I.
I don't know what we want to do, but.
Commissioner, Chairman, I'm gonna take a crack at reinstating C.
That's a good one to start with.
Let, let's do some discussion for, okay, well, yeah, let's, let's.
Under any circumstance, we want you to consider.
Let's re-estate C.
I move that the planning commission revokes its recent continuation of Title 15 amendment, uh, item C and puts it back on the agenda for tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, back to, back to, uh, the, uh, multi-use zone amendment in this. One of the things that, uh, before we take any motions or anything about it are discussed too much. Uh, I think for the same reason that we continued, uh, the discussion on the mixed use zone on Fourth North, I think that this needs to be continued as well until, until we can, uh, have both to discuss and make them, uh, so that there is no difference in language or in purpose of what we're doing. So I would like to continue, uh, A for that reason. When we have, and the reason I say that is, is that I think that because mixed use is new, it's a new, it's a new item in Title 15. I would like to have more members of our commission here when we discuss that. Does that make sense?
Solid.
Yep.
Great points.
Okay, so, uh, any other discussion about that? If not, I would entertain, entertain a motion on, uh, continuing A.
I'll make that motion that we continue Title 15 Amendment A.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, continue. All right, now B.
I move the planning commission recommend, oh, are you ready for a motion on that one? I've read it. I'm good with it.
Public hearing, and you're ready.
Oh, public hearing.
Yes, it is a public.
I'm, I am good with it. It is the most minor marginal increase I've ever seen.
I think it works very well, and I think, I go along with exactly what Joseph said. Uh, you know, such minor things, but good things, I mean, it clarified himself. I'm in favor of that as well. Any discussion?
I'd really like a really lengthy presentation on that item from Mr. Anderson. Just kidding.
I could bury you with something, but here, so trust me.
You could too. All right, uh, so we will go into public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address the commission in a public hearing?
Yeah, that would make sense to me. This is the first one.
There you go. Uh, seeing none, uh, we'll go out of public hearing. And, uh, if there's, is there any more further discussion with staff or amongst the commission?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of Title 15 Amendment B.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes. All right, back to C amendment.
That one's already continued.
We have taken it off and continued as of Joseph.
You're right, you're right.
I'm here. I'm here. We're good.
Grab another Diet Coke, will you?
I'm working on it.
Okay. Dave?
Tell me how much of what I share now doesn't make sense, and I'll go back and try to fill in gaps. But, uh, we have a program today that allows for developments to be approved that don't strictly meet all of our zoning requirements. Things like setbacks, even minimum lot size. Um, uh, we've used it relative to building heights and a handful of different things like that, master plan developments. Um, today, we have, um, maybe I'd say, uh, until just, uh, recently, staff has viewed, Mr. Warnick.
Hot diggity, we've got somebody else to make a motion.
Let's start over.
Yeah, we'll start over.
Let's start, let's get it going.
We are on the last item for the night, unless you guys have more. But, uh, talking about master plan developments. And, um, today, I, I keep saying that. That's really not.
Today.
Um, up until recently, staff has, uh, treated, and we think our code reads such that approving a master plan development is an administrative act that the city council takes, um, with the ability on their part ultimately to administer some discretion. And there's language in the code today that says something to the effect of that, uh, you know, these, these strict, I'll say that even differently, the strict adherence to the city's zoning requirements can be modified at the discretion of the city council based on these different things. That's how our code reads. Um, and, uh, through an experience that we've had, our legal counsel has conferred with some other legal minds in the state, people that I have the utmost respect for. I think our legal staff does as well. And they have suggested that there's a better way for us to operate in a discretionary kind of a realm. And it's to use our zoning power where it's clearly a legislative act. At least that's our opinion, is that it's clearly a legislative act. Um, as is the case with example, um, or for example. It doesn't seem like it's that late, but I'm, I'm kinda, I'm not hitting on all cylinders. Um, uh, we have the development enhancement overlay that is a zone change by way of an overlay zone. Go through a formal zone change process, um, where, uh, we've relied on the idea that as councils are operating in their legislative capacity, they can, uh, exercise pretty broad discretion in terms of what does and doesn't get approved for reasons that they don't need to put a lot of effort into justifying. Um, it's the same with some other, uh, overlays that we've created, the infill overlay, created to afford opportunities to develop some properties, um, most of the time in the, the, uh, kinda historic part of the community that, um, again, by way of adhering to our strict zoning requirements, uh, might have very little development potential. And in short, the concept here is to take much of the language that we have right now in our master plan development section of the code and to morph that into an overlay zone. So our master plan development section of Title 15 would be struck. And this language would be added as 1532080, um, with our overlay zone, uh, kinda section of the code where we have other overlay zoning districts described. And this would, uh, outline the process that somebody would, well, it doesn't do that so much as, um, uh, basically just describe the purpose of the overlay zone, criteria that has to be met, and a handful of different things like that to set the table for somebody to make application for a master planned development overlay, which a lot of times would be accompanied with another zone change component, like changing the zoning from rural residential to R112 or something like that, and a preliminary plat, uh, approval request or something like that, but.
Just almost answered my question. My, my question is, can the underlying zone change and the MPD overlay zone designation be applied for at the exact same time?
Liked now, when most of the master plan development proposals that you see are accompanied with a zone change, I, it's gonna be the same, I think.
Awesome, then I don't have concerns.
Okay, so what happens now? And what would happen with this, with this? So.
That's a great.
Walk me through, yeah.
Um, and the best way I think I can answer that is that you won't see a change. You really won't. We'll be recommending, simply that instead of things get approved as master plan developments, uh, in a particular zone contingent upon that zone change, we'll be recommending that, um, the master plan development overlay zone be part of an approval with another zone change and a particular development approval, like a preliminary plat. So a little bit, uh, certainly semantic, uh, by way of just how things are described, but yet trying to make a bright line, uh, to say, well, a bright line between what is and isn't happening with the master plan development approval, to say this is a legislative act. And doing that by way of how the overlay district has been described and the like. Um, we have not had problems with our master plan development program and people challenging, uh, the city's ability to exercise discretion uh, by way of what gets required, for example, with the master plan development. But for one time in my time here, and I would even say my predecessors, going back close to 25 years now, um, but, uh, we had an experience, which is where I could drag this one on for a long time, uh, that made us pause, get some outside counsel, and come up with this as a way to make sure that what we have intended can happen and should happen with the master plan development proposal, really does, and that the council retains that discretion, um, uh, to be able to say yes or no, to be able to require maybe like, uh, some type of additional transportation improvement because somebody wants, uh, some kind of concession on a zoning side of things, zoning standard modification or the like, truly setting it up to where it legitimately is a quid pro quo kind of a thing. Um, and again, uh, we felt like it was that way for a long time. Um, I wanna believe that, but yet this is maybe like a belt to go with suspenders or vice versa. Just another way to solidify what we've always intended to do with the master plan development.
Little bit of boilerplate.
That's.
Legally stronger. It's, it's a stronger legal foundation.
That's a good way to summarize it, even outside, yeah. So. That's it. Exciting stuff, I'll tell you.
Exciting.
I had to save it for the last.
I saw that, I saw that in all the commissioners' faces. It was exciting.
I'm glad I came for it.
So what we're looking at here tonight is a recommendation. Is it a recommendation?
Yes, it is.
To the city council on this, uh, Title 15 amendment. So is there any further discussion between the commissioners? By the way, we'll, we will welcome Commissioner Warnick to, to the stand with us. That's good. We always like more people here. Although you've missed a lot of good stuff.
I'm sure.
Good stuff.
What's a good public hearing?
Well, and that was what I was gonna say. So, uh, if there is no further discussion, we will have a public hearing. And we will go into the public hearing now. Is there any comments from the public?
I'll ask this one.
You, you just as well get on TV. It's seen by millions.
You'll be on TV, I'll show you later.
People do comment.
It is, it is literally on YouTube.
Um, my name is Bailey.
You live in Spanish Fork, cool.
Welcome, Bailey.
Welcome to the planning commission, Bailey. Good to see you.
So I don't know if my question would fit in this one, or if I should just wait till I'm saying for the other one, but I've talked to Dave a little bit about this box of worms that I'm gonna open up, but when there are the master plan developments that are next to property that's zoned rural residential or residential agriculture, the setback requirements for those are not, I think it doesn't allow for additional setbacks. Whereas I think the code said something about if it's next to any R1 or R3 zone, you have to have more of a setback requirement versus like only a minimum of five feet if it's next to rural residential. So I don't know if that fits in here or if I need to wait, but it just affects our, so. Some, well, basically if it's too close, it affects everybody's ability to farm. It like affects the soil moisture and crop yield and all of that on other sites of the property.
So Dave, if I speak out of turn, let me know. But by u- utilizing what Dave is talking about, uh, this commission could recommend to the city council, or the city council could, uh, modify that. And they would have the legislative authority to do that, them being the legislative authority.
And if they don't, it would be the setback in the underlying zone. They would have to comply with the zone that they're, that is design, is designated as, unless they change it to something less or more than the underlying zone's setback.
And so the neighbor would.
Which they can do in the MPD, like you're saying.
And the neighbor would have every right to come and make that petition too. Either, either us or to the city, or, yeah, to the city council.
Okay.
And, uh, and make your.
Well, you betcha.
You bet.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, awesome, thanks guys. Okay, awesome, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Say bye.
Jackie, you didn't state your name.
My name is Jackie Larson.
Jackie, thank you.
It's good to meet you, Bailey.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, is there any discussion amongst the, the commission or?
He closed public hearing, Anna, just so you know.
I've got to close the public hearing. So, public hearing is now closed, and I agree with Dave. Something's going on with my brain at now, at this time, too. So, any further discussion? If there is none, I would entertain a motion.
I'm willing to do it.
Very good.
I move the Planning Commission recommends approval of Title 15 Amendment C.
Second.
And we have a second. Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else for discussion this evening from staff?
Dave usually.
Dave, Dave's got?
Yes, training on May 9th, the city council.
With the city council?
Yep.
What, Anna?
I got the answer for you.
City council training, May 9th?
Planning Commission and city council joint training, May 9th.
Is that when the Planning Commission trains the city council? Is that what you are saying? That would be presumptuous, frankly, of us.
Even less.
A bit pretentious, I dare say.
Subject is Catholic.
Yes, good.
So, do, do we have a commission on the 3rd?
Yes, next thing's on the 3rd. Or maybe that I'll mention with me, is we've got one project that's undecided, is whether it's gonna be ready for your meeting on the 3rd or not. If it's not, it actually, yes, I'll go ahead and jinx it. It might be a fairly light night, which I think.
Don't say it.
Might be good.
Tell me that all three, four times.
I'll say that every time.
Don't do that.
And unless that.
Well, keep in mind, I'm always really concerned about making the most use of your time that I can when you're here. So, I'm, I'm almost apologizing.
I've seen that.
For if we have a light agenda, you guys come for not very much, but.
I can testify.
You only have one meeting a month, so I gotta pack it in.
That's.
There you go.
So, May 9th, at what time?
We're thinking 6 o'clock. It might be 5:30, but we will give you ample notice on that.
Do we have an agenda for it yet? Are there things that?
We have people that are working on that, actually.
I believe it's land use training and Catholics.
Yeah, and there might be some other things, too.
It'll be really good to have some discussion with city council on things that are going on.
Yeah, it's, I hope that there is an opportunity for some of that.
Because it, it has tons to do with planning.
So, it's meant to be a training, not necessarily a discussion with them?
There is some required training that our insurer makes us do each year, so we will check that box. And I hope as well that night that, you know, just by way of you guys having some conversation with the city council on whatever you two as bodies want to talk about, that, you know, that, I think it'd be a shame to miss that opportunity. So, maybe that's a reason also to try to keep that agenda on the 3rd a little bit light.
Maybe we oughta have a tag team wrestling match.
So, I'll be quiet during the training, then.
Your call.
I think, I think you're allowed to say hi entirely.
Totally your call entirely.
You're allowed to say hi to everyone, Sean. How are you? And then, well, I'll be quiet.
Is there any further discussion for this evening?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good game.
Thank you to the public.